Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Ms. Jezny?
Here.
Ms. Kearns?
Here.
Ms. Lanning? Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Richmond?
Here.
All stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there a motion for the approval of the agenda?
I want to make a motion to revise the agenda. Sorry, I'm late. Um, our vision would be to add a public comment period to the end of the meeting. Sorry, my clock's two minutes.
Okay, I have a motion for the revision of the agenda. Is there a second? Okay, I'll second. Any discussion?
Madam President, we briefly mentioned having a public comment about the new details that we're going to hear tonight next Monday. I don't know that we ever got to completely schedule on that. Is that still a thing?
No, we were only going to add an additional meeting if needed after this meeting, and so it's still a possibility.
So I was, the reason why I added this was that we've gotten a lot of emails since Friday with feedback about Plan E. I know that there's been a lot of people that have wanted to speak to Plan E, and I think the more opportunity we can get people to give their feedback, the better, rather than the opposite of that.
So, so after the meeting, we could possibly still decide to have a public comment session a week from tonight, perhaps?
If we'd like to, yes.
Okay.
Could you repeat your motion, please?
To revise the agenda, to add a public comment period at the end of the facilities discussion prior to adjournment.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Well, I'm concerned if we do that now, what about people who would have wanted to talk but didn't know that was going to be an option and aren't here tonight?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Maybe we need to do another one.
Yeah, and I, I honestly think the more, the better. So I think there are.
I agree with that.
I think there are people here that are here tonight that are probably going to hear some things that they'd like to respond to. Um, you know, I know that the chamber sent out an email asking people to come to this meeting, to contact us. Um, so I would assume some of them, they want to speak this evening. Um, so I think rather than having them come back out next Monday, just giving people the opportunity to talk.
Would require a sign up. That's what normally happens.
So I kind of thought we would have the facilities discussion, take a five-minute adjournment or whatever for people to sign up, and then let them say what they need to say. Or we can make them come back on Monday.
Any additional discussion?
There were some that would like to have come and think that there was time in the open session to talk that did not.
Yeah, I totally did, but I think that, um, I think this should have been a special meeting for a public comment period to be done, but that didn't happen. Um, but I think if, if throughout this process, if we care about community input, which I know that you've talked about a lot for the last six months, that more community input is better than none, and for the people that are here, and maybe no one will sign up, maybe nobody is interested in providing any feedback, and then that's fine. Um, and then if we want to have another one on Monday, I, I just think there's never harm in providing more community input into the conversation. And I'm all in.
Any additional discussion? All right, if there are, I'm going to call the votes. Ms. Jezny?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Lamb?
Yes.
And the motion passes?
Yes.
Six one. Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Oh, motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
No.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Lamb?
Yes.
And the motion passes?
Yes.
Six one. Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Oh, motion to approve the amended agenda.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Ms. Miller?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Jezny?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns?
Yes.
Mr. Richmond?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning?
Yes.
And the motion passes? All approved. Items of discussion. Coleman and Klein chairlifts.
Who's that?
Yes, so, um, we put out an RFP for a chairlift at Coleman Elementary. Uh, the purpose for the chairlift is to ensure, uh, students there, um, can get from one level to the other that may have some, um, accessibility needs at that building. Uh, that RFP was published in the news press, and the bid you see before us, uh, was the only bid we received, uh, that is access elevator lifts. And, uh, pulled up the proposal on the screen here, you can see the proposal is sixty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Um, that includes a term key project of all the equipment and everything installed on site. And so at the board meeting on the twenty-fourth, uh, we will be asking the board to approve, um, this proposal at that time, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Is this a replacement, or is this a new installation?
It's actually a new installation. We don't have any chairlifts at Coleman at this time.
How's this getting paid for?
Out of fund four, capital improvements.
Is it budgeted?
This was not budgeted beginning of the year, but, um, we have a situation at that school where we need this chairlift for a student, uh, similar to if a, a student moved in that had a specific IEP that might, uh, need a, a full-time pair with them, we would be responsible for that, but we might not budget it at the beginning of the year.
So, then how is, how are we, um, making the necessary budgetary?
It'd be from our, our, from our fund four balances.
Okay.
And we can afford this, then?
We can.
Okay.
I, I would tell you, we can't afford not to because of the needs of a student at that school.
I know that, I just wanted you to say it.
Absolutely.
Okay, any additional questions? All right, if there are none, let's move on to number two.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
I can't see the board agenda. Is it Avala up this first, or Fort Hayes? Can someone?
Fort Hayes.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Fort Hayes.
Okay. I don't think I have any. Tess?
If not.
Can you hear me? I am bringing to you tonight a memorandum of agreement with Fort Hayes State University. These are very typical. We have several universities that we partner with to put pre-service teachers in our schools and in our classrooms so that they can gain the student teaching practical and observation hours that they need to become certified. So Fort Hayes State University, their memorandum had, um, expired, and so I just bringing that forward tonight, that we need to see, information item. Any questions about it?
I had a quick question. I didn't even know they'd done that previously, but that's a long ways away. Do the students, do the student teachers come and stay here?
Uh, it's typically somebody that resides within our community, and they're taking online courses, and they need an onsite experience, and so that's the situation.
I was just curious. It's, it's a long way out.
Yeah, we have several that take online courses.
I have a question, because it just says Edison Elementary.
It does, and, um, Mr. Corel, if you want to jump in, you can. Um, the actual document that comes through the end of the month may need to be revised because we would want to, we would want to be able to service a student in any of our schools. And so that was one that went through Mr. Corel that was attached, but, um, it's not being approved tonight. This is just information item. When it comes back to you, it would be any of our school settings.
Okay, that was just my question.
Any additional questions?
I will note too, that it is only a long year agreement with them.
Okay. Okay, if there are none, you can move on.
Okay, Avala University is the next one, and that will come to you at the end of the month as well for, um, as an action item. Uh, also, just another pre-service memorandum of, memorandum of, uh, understanding so that we can have students in our classrooms that hopefully certify and gain experience with our students. Any questions about this one? Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. It is not a question, only it's a comment. On the items on the agenda, can we also include about the alignment? If you're looking at like an item, and then you're looking at the, at our, um, continuous improvement plan, are we able to put the alignment on the agenda like as well? And so like if you're looking at an item, it's easy to see the correlation in between an item, and then you're also able to look at, at the policies as well, like, and then it's just all in one area. Can we do that? Am I explaining myself clearly? Mike, you're looking puzzled.
Uh, I was thinking it was on there.
No, it's only the policies. It's not.
We've talked about it before.
And it's alignment with what you're asking for?
CSEB.
CSEB, thank you.
I just use all of the title and not the, not the acronyms, but yes. Are you all in agreement with that?
Yeah, I can buy into that.
Okay. Okay, and now we will take a five-minute break in order to give anyone in, in the audience an opportunity to come up and put your name down to speak for it.
I think the, I think it was.
Is it after?
Discussion and after. And here's the thing, if nobody wants, if we, if we have a conversation, and then everyone thinks it's great, and nobody wants to sign up, then let's recess for five minutes, come back, nobody signed up, and we can adjourn.
Do the discussion first.
Yeah, because I feel like, and I feel like this happens a lot. We have it at the beginning. Well, we always do it at the beginning, and then we discuss it, and then there's questions, and it's weird.
I see.
Okay. I would like to start, is that you Dr. McGinnis?
Sure, I will start. We will have several admin presenting on this topic tonight, but I want to go back to October twenty-seventh in that board meeting. The Board of Education approved at that time seven oh two, and it's in quotes here, "Accept Plan E with modifications that will meet our financial responsibility and the needs of our community." So after being tasked with the board, and from the board to do that, we met with, uh, Mr. Leek, who I believe is the creator of Plan E, so our district admin met with him to go over that plan. Um, about two weeks ago, at that time, we had a conversation about keeping Hyde open with only having two elementary schools in the south. That caused some issues. So there were a few suggested items from Mr. Leek. One was moving Carden Park to the Truman and Central Path, and then one was moving Parkway to the Spring Garden and Benton Path. And so we will have our district administrators present, much like we have the other facilities options per the direction of our, of our board, and then we will gladly take any questions. So I'm going to start with the feeder system, and you should have in your packets that model for the three high schools. And you will see on there, there is one middle school closing. The intention would be for Webster to close the following year and be repurposed. Uh, that program would be repurposed in another building. This would be less disruption with only retiring one building. It would provide a consistent middle school model being seven, eight, much like the other options that we've talked about. This would also balance out free and reduced lunch across our district. An additional learning site would be delayed. It does clean up our feeder system a bit with one exception. So if you look at Truman Middle School, it has five hundred and eighty-nine students, and that is one hundred and five over the optimal capacity. And so that is something we talked to Mr. Leek about. Um, so one of the solutions would be to split a school, and you guys know this from Vision Forward, we, most of our schools now split off into different middle schools. Carden Park actually feeds into all middle schools, and so this would be an opportunity to look at a school and have, we would have to split to make that doable for Truman Middle School. Uh, and then Jake is going to come up and talk about the boundaries. Ready?
Are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. I just didn't know, I didn't know if you were ready. Okay, so, uh, Plan E boundaries. Um, at the elementary level, um, you guys should have a copy of this in your, uh, packet. Um, at the elementary level, since we're retaining all elementary kids, and I think the hope with Plan E is that we cause the least disruption possible, um, we are just going to use our current boundaries, and then there are some slight modifications to, uh, get sixth grade back in Hosea, Hyde, and Lindbergh, um, which I'll show you now. So, um, sixth grade back in Hosea. Um, what I've got on the screen here is you'll see the red-shaded areas. Um, on the first, the farthest southwest there, the red-shaded with the red outline was Hosea's district, and that would shift to Hyde. And then, then on the other side of Hyde's boundaries, the red-shaded area was Hyde, and that would shift to Pickett. Um, and that would facilitate moving the sixth grade in with the numbers that you have, um, on your feeder system sheet that Dr. McGinnis gave you. Um, then secondary, um, for the shift in sixth grade back into Lindbergh, um, the red-shaded area to the west there, um, would move from Lindbergh into Eugene Field, and then the one on the east side of Eugene Field would shift from Eugene Field to Oak Grove. Um, and that would facilitate moving the sixth graders back into Lindbergh. So, other than that, at the elementary level, all your boundaries stay the same. Um, and then where your change would really occur, um, would be the middle and high level, um, with the bold orange lines that we have on your sheet, and you can see on the screen, that would be, um, the feeder pattern for the proposed numbers that you have. So Hosea, Hyde, and Pickett. And I messed up, because on this one, on Parkway, Parkway should go south too. Sorry. This is hand drawn, and this isn't computer. So, um, Hosea, Hyde, Pickett, and Parkway would go south. Um, and then, um, Carden, Edison, Stath and, and Ellison, and Oak would go to Central. Um, the, that's a change from the original proposal of Plan E, which had Stath going south, but if we use our current boundaries, that would cut Central's feeder into, Central and Truman's feeder into two different sections of town. You'd have Carden and Edison on this side, and, or Carden, Edison, and Parkway on this side, and then Oak and Ellison on the other side, with Stath taking a chunk out of the middle of it, going south to Spring Garden, and then to Benton. Um, so that takes up to that piece. Um, and then Lindbergh, Pershing, Field, and Coleman going Rubidu, Lafayette, and the north. Um, are there any questions besides, remember, I, I messed up on Parkway there, should be going south?
Is there any thought of, um, the capacity of Bodie as compared to the capacity of Truman?
Uh, the capacity of Bodie is less than the capacity of Truman. Optimum capacity of Bodie is four sixty, and I think Truman's four eighty-five-ish.
So there is a page in your folders that has the capacity optimal and maximum of all of our schools.
Yeah, so really, with the three middle schools that we have, the only way to facilitate your space would be, um, to either divide one school such as Stath or Carden that touches both boundaries, or take two schools and split a chunk off of both of them. So split a chunk off of Oak that would feed to Rubidu and Lafayette, and a piece of Stath or Carden down south, or do it in one school and split it. Would be the only way that you could meet capacity at all of your schools, at the middle level. Are there any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
Nope, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Corel, I want to speak about staffing, please.
All right, so it's estimated that Plan E would save approximately six hundred and eight thousand dollars in year one regarding staffing. Um, the max savings, so again, we'd, we'd talked previously about kind of how we came up with these potential savings and max savings, all based on attrition, um, hoping to reduce staff through that. Um, so that's where we came up with the six oh eight. Ideally, um, support staff would be the ones that most likely, due to turnover, would be the savings there. We are projecting, um, that Plan E would reduce teachers by zero because the biggest savings we had in the other plans were, um, at the high school level, um, with a consolidated into two. Um, we also, um, conducted a study based on administrators with a student-to-administrator ratio, same with secretaries, counselors. So we tried to do things very similar to the other plans. Um, as for Webster and Plan E, again, that is, um, identified to be a phased approach, not until the next school year, not next year, but twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, with that, the potential savings in year two would be approximately one point five six million. Um, again, that is, that is the potential savings, not the max. Um, some of the staff that's impacted would be three administrators, fifty-four certified staff, and twenty-five classified staff. So this plan does, um, when it comes to impacted staff, a lot less than any of the other plans. Um, Bodie would have approximately forty-five staff members impacted. Central, since we kind of balance out those numbers at the high school level, um, we would, um, there'd be about thirty-two central staff members be affected with that.
Can you tell us, so I know there was a doc, so it's not, what, what document are you going off of right now, so we can follow along?
That would be the.
This one?
Yep, nope.
So I saw one online, I don't think we have it in paper form.
Correct.
Um, the staffing, the one labeled staffing.
Yep.
So the, the issue that I had in trying to read this is not knowing current. You know what I'm saying, like?
Current's on top.
So the top is the current.
Correct. Then the bottom one is the projected.
Okay.
And I'll continue if you have.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to try to follow.
Um, finally, I'd like to note that, again, we've been mentioning that the overall goal is to reduce our staffing through attrition, retirements, and resignations. Um, we still have, if we go with Plan E or the status quo, um, we are looking at about six hundred and eight thousand dollars in reductions. Um, unfortunately, if we, um, do Plan E or, or the status quo, we are going to have to make some difficult decisions moving forward when it comes to our staffing, because we are attempting to save approximately four million dollars next year, and then four million dollars in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. So we, we will be well short of those numbers.
So can you, so we're at six oh eight in reductions with what you guys have presented. Um, so you, you said, and, and we've, we've talked about this for a long time, that there needs to be hard decisions made. But we don't ever actually talk about the numbers behind that. So I guess, and I think we had it on one document, and maybe this is the one where we needed to do ninety, ninety positions cut over forty-five one year, forty-five the next year.
Yeah, if you take a teacher that has their master's plus ten, uh, to save a million dollars, that's about seventeen teachers that you need to reduce. Now, teachers aren't the only staff members in our district. We have all sorts of different, uh, positions that, that would be a different ratio. Uh, but that kind of just gives you a quick synopsis of, okay, if we're trying to save, um, you know, four million next year, and just to save a million of seventeen teachers, that might give you an idea of.
Thank you.
You know, the number of staffing we're looking at. And of course, always I, I, we use teacher as an example, but anytime we look at this, we're always looking to cause the least amount of impact on the core classroom, and obviously, when you have a teacher, they are very, very core to the classroom. So, um, you know, that is something that we always look at with that in mind, is how can we have the least amount of impact on that core classroom.
And, and this, this plan doesn't include, you know, you and I had talked, I think after the last meeting about, um, that there were, the reason why Plan Seven was picked was because this bottom line was going to have to have an addition, additional reductions. But we never talked, to my knowledge, we haven't talked about those reductions, so can you explain what those reductions would have, should have, could have been? And then also, um, are there potentials in this plan? And then my second question is, have we discussed cutting, um, or retiring any non-academic facilities? Keatley Warehouse, crayons to computers, those types of things?
Sure. No, great question. So everything you see in the financial projections only include the plan. We know whether Plan E, any of the plans chosen, or if nothing, um, goes forward for next year, we are going to have to cut approximately eight million dollars from the budget in the next two years to try to get on track to our twenty percent reserve ratio. So you are correct, we don't have those additional items in here. That way you can compare plan to plan. No matter what happens with the board decision, whether there's action or no action, we will need to make those, uh, adjustments. Uh, as, as far as administration buildings go, uh, Keatley has a gym that Truman currently uses, and so many of the plans have different scenarios with how Truman and Bodie, um, are using those plans. And so, um, if you are still using Truman as a middle school, you need to keep Keatley's gym, uh, associated with Truman to have those activities.
Or Bodie's, though.
Or Bodie's, or you would need to do something at Truman's gym on that site.
Right.
And so that would, you know, most likely take some sort of general obligation bond, um, to do something like that.
On the screen, that would be the feeder pattern for the proposed numbers that you have. So Hosea Hyde and Pickett. And I messed up because on this one, on Parkway, Parkway should go south too. Sorry, this is hand drawn and this isn't computer. So Hosea Hyde, Pickett, and Parkway would go south. And then Carden, Edison, Statham, and Ellison, and Oak would go to Central. That's a change from the original proposal of Plan E, which had Statham going south. But if we use our current boundaries, that would cut Central's feeder into, Central and Truman's feeder into two different sections of town. You'd have Carden and Edison on this side, or Carden, Edison, and Parkway on this side, and then Oak and Ellison on the other side, with Statham taking a chunk out of the middle of it, going south to Spring Garden and then to Benton. So that takes up that piece. And then Lindbergh, Pershing, Field, and Coleman going Rubidoo, Lafayette, and the north. Are there any questions besides, remember, I messed up on Parkway, that should be going south?
Is there any thought of the capacity of Bodie as compared to the capacity of Truman?
The capacity of Bodie is less than the capacity of Truman. Optimum capacity of Bodie is 460, and I think Truman's 485-ish.
Tom, there is a page in your folders that has the capacity optimal and maximum of all of our schools.
Yeah, so really with the three middle schools that we have, the only way to facilitate your space would be to either divide one school such as Statham or Carden that touches both boundaries, or take two schools and split a chunk off of both of them. So split a chunk off of Oak that would feed to Rubidoo and Lafayette, and a piece of Statham or Carden down south, or do it in one school and split it. Would be the only way that you could meet capacity at all of your schools at the middle level. Are there any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
Nope, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Correll, I want to speak about staffing, please.
All right, so it's estimated that Plan E would save approximately $608,000 in year one regarding staffing. The max savings, so again, we had talked previously about kind of how we came up with these potential savings and max savings, all based on attrition, hoping to reduce staff through that. So that's where we came up with the 608. Ideally, support staff would be the ones that most likely due to turnover would be the savings there. We are projecting that Plan E would reduce teachers by zero, because the biggest savings we had in the other plans were at the high school level with a consolidated end to two. We also conducted a study based on administrators with student-to-administrator ratio, same with secretaries, counselors. So we tried to do things very similar to the other plans. As for Webster and Plan E, again, that is identified to be a phased approach, not until the next school year, not next year, but 27, 28. With that, the potential savings in year two would be approximately 1.56 million. Again, that is, that is the potential savings, not the max. Some of the staff that's impacted would be three administrators, 54 certified staff, and 25 classified staff. So this plan does, when it comes to impacted staff, a lot less than any of the other plans. Bodie would have approximately 45 staff members impacted. Central, since we kind of balance out those numbers at the high school level, we would, there'd be about 32 Central staff members be affected with that.
So I know there was a doc, so it's not, what document are you going off of right now? So we can follow along.
That would be the, yep, nope.
So I saw one online, I don't think we have it in paper form.
Correct.
The staffing, the one labeled staffing.
Yep.
So the issue that I had in trying to read this is not knowing current. You know what I'm saying, like?
Current's on top.
So the top is the current.
Correct. Then the bottom one is the projected.
Okay.
And I'll continue if you have.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to follow.
Finally, I'd like to note that, again, we've been mentioning that the overall goal is to reduce our staffing through attrition, retirements, and resignations. We still have, if we go with Plan E or the status quo, we are looking at about $608,000 in reductions. Unfortunately, if we do Plan E or the status quo, we are going to have to make some difficult decisions moving forward when it comes to our staffing, because we are attempting to save approximately $4 million next year, and then $4 million in the 27, 28 school year. So we will be well short of those numbers.
So can you, so we're at 608 introductions with what you guys have presented. So you said, and we've talked about this for a long time, that there needs to be hard decisions made. But we don't ever actually talk about the numbers behind that. So I guess, and I think we had it on one document, and maybe this is the one where we needed to do 90 positions cut over 45 one year, 45 the next year.
Yeah, if you take a teacher that has their master's plus 10, to save a million dollars, that's about 17 teachers that you need to reduce. Now, teachers aren't the only staff members in our district. We have all sorts of different positions that that would be a different ratio. But that kind of just gives you a quick synopsis of, okay, if we're trying to save, you know, $4 million next year, and just to save a million of 17 teachers, that might give you an idea of, you know, the number of staffing we're looking at. And of course, always, I, we use teacher as an example, but anytime we look at this, we're always looking to cause the least amount of impact on the core classroom. And obviously, when you have a teacher, they are very, very core to the classroom. So, you know, that is something that we always look at with that in mind, is how can we have the least amount of impact on that core classroom?
And this, this plan doesn't include, you know, you and I had talked, I think, after the last meeting about, that there were, the reason why Plan 7 was picked was because this bottom line was going to have to have an additional reductions. But we never talked, to my knowledge, we haven't talked about those reductions. So can you explain what those reductions would have, should have, could have been? And then also, are there potentials in this plan? And then my second question is, have we discussed cutting or retiring any non-academic facilities? Keatley Warehouse, Crayons to Computers, those types of things?
Sure. No, great question. So everything you see in the financial projections only include the plan. We know whether Plan E, any of the plans chosen, or if nothing goes forward for next year, we are going to have to cut approximately $8 million from the budget in the next two years to try to get on track to our 20% reserve ratio. So you are correct, we don't have those additional items in here. That way, you can compare plan to plan. No matter what happens with the board decision, whether there's action or no action, we will need to make those adjustments. As far as administration buildings go, Keatley has a gym that Truman currently uses. And so many of the plans have different scenarios with how Truman and Bodie are using those plans. And so if you are still using Truman as a middle school, you need to keep Keatley's gym associated with Truman to have those activities.
Or Bodie's, though.
Or Bodie's, or you would need to do something at Truman's gym on that site.
Right.
And so that would, you know, most likely take some sort of general obligation bond to do something like that. When you talk about other facilities, you know, when you close a building, the savings you get, there's a little bit of utility, but it's mostly staffing. And so Crayons to Computers and some of those, you know, like the grounds warehouse and those things, they are large buildings that don't have a lot of staffing there. And so if you close that building, you're really just closing a bunch of storage for all of our machinery. Crayons to Computers has all of our refrigerators and freezers that are used for food service. And so there is not a lot of savings there at those buildings besides just utility.
Well, and I think that's where the issue for me is coming, is when we're talking about closing buildings and the estimated revenue or reduction in expenses there. But then we're also saying we're only going to do it by attrition. But if we, but it's, the cost savings is from cutting staff, so it's not attrition.
We hope to do everything by attrition.
But all, I mean, considering the last plan, like, all of Bessie wasn't gonna, like, they were gonna, you know what I'm saying?
Correct, it was, it was all through attrition. Could the district at some point, let's say, we continue to, you know, go down to 6%, 5%, 4% reserve ratio, which we won't, but if we did, then I, I think the district would need to make tough decisions about riffing staff.
Yeah, I just, I think we're all using the term attrition, and maybe we don't all have the same definition.
Sure. With closures of buildings, I truly believe you can get back to 20% through attrition. If you don't have the trigger of closing some buildings, it's going to be much more difficult to do it through attrition.
So when you say attrition, you mean if we are going to close a building and eliminate those positions, that's attrition?
Right, so for example.
Because the position isn't there anymore.
Right, so let's say we had.
That isn't attrition, that's not what you're calling attrition.
Well, hold on, let me explain. We have three custodians, and we might have.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
We might have five food service, okay? And so if we close that building, we're probably going to have three custodians and possibly five food service that might retire or resign before the next year, so we'd be able to consolidate that staff. If we didn't, we would not, we'd be overstaffed in those areas.
Yeah, but, but that's what I'm saying, it's like, if you didn't close our school, they're not going to leave. You know what I mean, like, I'm not going to say, I, I think the likelihood of saying, we're going to close your building, do you feel like resigning or retiring? Like, that, I get, that's attrition, but that's forced attrition, that's.
And we're not closing buildings to try to force people to resign or retire. It is truly trying to right-size our space and right-size our staff.
Yes, I get that.
But in the previous plans, we also had retirements of three to four buildings, and so that's a much larger pool of staff. And so with this Plan E, retiring one building, it's just going to be a little bit more limited, and so it's going to be difficult to do that through attrition.
Well, and I, I, I don't think any of this can be done through attrition. I don't, I don't think any of it can be done through attrition. And much of that is because we went through the long-range plan for so long, and we talked, and at that time, it was not driven on cost savings. And we talked so much about, there wasn't going to be as much cost savings realized because we needed everyone, especially at the high school levels. I didn't, I didn't expect you all to come back with a Plan E that didn't close any buildings. I, I thought there would be more closures, but there are, that's okay.
Mark, what's our, what is our anticipated turnover in a normal year in terms of resignation and retirement?
I will say nutrition and building maintenance. Those are our highest turnover positions. When it comes to teachers, on average, we have about 100, 120 new staff members that participate in our, in our beginning teacher program. But again, when we talk about attrition, we know that those positions won't align exactly. So that's why we've been stating that we're probably going to be, through Plan 2 and Plan 7, we were going to be overstaffed, because we did not want to reduce.
I mean, I think.
Cut.
Well, realistically, we'll have to do both. We'll have to do both. Like, even, and if we don't, if we do nothing, and 100 people and 100 staff leave, then we would have to say, okay, we're not going to replace as many of these as possible, whether that's 45 this year, 45 next year. But like you said, they're not all going to fit in directly to where we need them, so you're going to have to make cut, you're, to me, I think you're going to have to do both and.
If you would tell me that, Robert, by FY '27, we need to be a 20% reserve ratio, yes, we'd have to lift people. But if you say, let, through attrition, you know, right-size the staff out to FY '29, we may not. But we're trying to do this in a way where we did it through attrition, so that way our staff would feel confident in their position and staying with the district. In 2018, they did not go through that process, they went through a ref process. And so I wasn't here at that time, but I hear from everybody, that was a pretty rough time. And so I know this is, this process isn't easy on everybody. We were trying to do things to where we could spread those savings out over multiple years by doing it through attrition, as people left, we'd be able to consolidate that staff.
So Mr. Correll, have you finished your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so get back to Webster, because if you close that building that's been retrofitted for its clientele, that would have to be done in the other buildings where we're going to disseminate those students, correct?
Right.
So that would hurt on whatever cost savings we're going to have as we retrofit other buildings.
Good, and that was one of the reasons why we decided that it was best to phase it out, instead of trying to do it all at once. When it comes to staffing, if we move that program into another building, we could probably reduce some of that, but we're still probably going to need, I'm not saying we're going to need a full administrator, but we're going to need somebody to possibly assist with that program. We're going to need, that staffing still needs to go over and support those students. Probably not going to.
It's going to take a bit of time.
I don't want to use cut, but to reduce those positions immediately, but we could reduce a few of those.
And Dr. Anderson is going to speak a little bit about all of the Webster programming in a bit. Dr. Hetchbord?
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Dennis? So in typical fashion, I have your projections for Plan E, and I'm glad Ms. Lanning brought up the fact that these don't have any additional savings in here besides the plans itself. We know we need to look for additional opportunities, but these are just the plans. So the first page is just your October budget revision, and then looking for no more savings without any type of consolidation plan. And this first page has been the same for the last, you know, three or four meetings, so you're probably pretty familiar with that first page. So looking at the second page is Plan E. I have a version two, meaning only the Webster and Bodie closings for Plan E. And so you can see the utility savings that you have for those two closures would be about $228,000, and we would realize that till FY '28, meaning we're going to give a year to be able to sell that building, so we can bring those savings online. And then if you look at FY '27 for certified and classified, $235,000 for certified, and $373,000 for classified, that's the $608,000 that Mr. Correll was talking about for next year as far as savings for staffing. And then FY '28, we look at about $652,000 for certified and $898,000 for classified, bringing both of those buildings offline, of course Webster being the next school year, and realizing those savings in FY '28. So again, this is through attrition, you know, that's why you see it more spread out instead of just one year if you were to, to, you know, do a different method. But that's how we presented all the other plans, and that's how I have this plan presented. We have any answering questions?
Okay. We will turn it over to Mrs. Studer, who's going to go over the academic impact.
All right, so our goal is always to ensure that there's a high-quality educator in front of our students. That doesn't differ from any plan you guys lead. And also ensure that the building leader is effective and monitors the instruction taking place in each and every classroom. What Plan E does is, it does establish a consistent middle school grade-level model, and it aligns all high school courses across sites to ensure consistency and equity. What I'm going to tell you is that if we redesign these high school courses to focus on that consistency and equity, Central will lose some of the programs, as staff and students would shift to support alignment across sites. This approach will come at a cost, and it's important to remember that open enrollment works both ways, not just for sports, but academics. In our current system, families can choose to send their children to Central because of academic programs as well. I put a table in your packet there. I'm grateful for Dr. Davis. She outlined the current reality of our high school programs. It looks like this, it was the first page. It says SJSD High School Offering Course Comparison 25 and 26. I'm just going to draw some generalized, just keynotes here. Nearly 40% of all course offerings already exist at two sites. So if you look at this, you'll see an S that indicates that it's offered particularly at Central, but then you'll also see it maybe offered at one of the other sites. I think there's some key questions that the board will need to think about. Depth versus spread. How might we promote greater instructional depth and reduce the inefficiencies that come with spreading our resources too thin? In what ways can we revise those secondary sites to ensure more equitable courses and that there's opportunities for our kids? Our greatest barrier isn't a lack of vision, an academic vision. It's not. I can write courses, we can write curriculum. The greatest barrier right now is, is we're in a teaching crisis. These challenges are inseparable, that you can't, they're interdependent upon each other. And without them, even the most thoughtfully designed courses and academic programs, the frameworks, the structures, they cannot reach their full potential. Right now, our academic infrastructure is very fragile. It is held together by a patchwork of teachers who are in their first few years, and I'm just going to say, if you look at Algebra 1, I'm very excited about the APR results that we received last Thursday, but I want you to understand that Algebra 1, English 2, Bio 1, and Government, those courses, those hold our accreditation. 62% of our Algebra 1 courses are three years or less. It is held together by those people who are also a critical shortage. And so I've tried to dig into the human resource side to see the years of experience of our educators. When you look at the years, if you average those years of experience, for example, I studied in one of the model, English 2. We have an individual that's at critical shortage there that has over 30-plus years. However, we have two individuals who have only taught two years. So I want you to realize this is, again, we can design college and career pathways, we can lead and develop academic programs, the issue is, is our teachers. The success of academics in our community rests on the quality of these educators, and ensuring that they have the right supports to be developed. You have the right supports. So what we were, and I don't want to go to, like, the combining of two sites, but I do, that we could establish collaboration, that would up the rigor that's taking place in our classrooms right now. I, I, I want you to understand that. Again, our academic service team will do what you need us to do, but this is, this is a teaching crisis right now. We're in a teaching shortage. And again, it's being held together by individuals who are on a subwaiver or critical shortage, or brand-new teachers who need to be supported. Any questions?
Would you say again what the courses were that are on the APR report?
Yes, absolutely. So when you look at the high school level, English 2, it's offered your sophomore year. Algebra 1, it's offered your eighth-grade year, or it's offered your freshman year. Bio 1, which is also offered your freshman year or your sophomore year, the majority of students take it their sophomore year now. See, I said Bio, Algebra, English 2, Government, Government. The one lonely social studies course that holds the accreditation is Government. And currently, right now, we are offering it our 11th grade year. So if there's anything that we need to get right in academic programs, is to ensure that we have the most highly qualified individual teaching those courses.
One other piece that I want to add, Stacia, you can add to this, but I believe there's a misconception that we can have a teacher teach at all three sites. And so, for example, Latin or some of those specialty areas, can you speak a little bit more to that, Stacia?
Absolutely. So when we were studying leading two sites, I particularly went into world languages. And if you can see, Dr. Davis has, if you go to world languages on the course, you will see that most of the world languages are offered at Central, with the exception of Spanish 3 and 4, those upper-level world language courses. At Central currently, I'm just going to use Latin, for example, and Latin 1, the teacher over there teaches twice Latin 1, okay? One of the courses has 12 students, he seats 28. The other, oh gosh, the other hour, he teaches Latin 1 again, he has 13, he seats 28. Do you understand the inefficiency there? If we could combine those 12 and 13 to put 25 and 28, and then I offer Latin 2, and then Latin 3 and 4, then we can move them to the other site for potentially the other day, you could lead it up in two sites. It's too thin when we're trying to lead it across three sites.
On this list, are we missing courses?
These are the advanced courses, so like what you'll see here, these are the elective courses that are offered, like, and I wish Dr. Davis was here, because she put this together, but you'll see a lot of the global, we call them global electives, which means you want all students to take those global electives. But they're not all the elective courses, Ms. Williams, they're the courses where we looked specifically, where are we not offering these courses across all three of our sites?
Oh, okay, well, because I would also like going, what are you offering at all three sites?
I can pull that together for you. You're going to have courses like English 1 that has to be offered at three sites, English 2 has to be offered at three sites, English 4 has to be offered at three sites. You have, you have like a diet of high school courses that we have to have because they fit the graduation rate to graduate in the state of Missouri.
Well, because if there's not like a preface to this, I'm looking, I'm looking at it, and I'm like, it's no English at all offered at Benton, what's going on, you know, so?
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams, that's a great point, and I would definitely pull that and leave that at our board meeting, a revised copy of that, just so that you can see the outline of the required high school courses. These are, these are experiences and opportunities that we offer to our kids right now that we're able to do, due to open enrollment, and due to the fact that we're leading it up at one consistent site right now at Central.
Yeah, by definition, this was where not all three high schools offered something.
That's correct.
So anything else we left off saying that, well, that's currently available at all?
That's correct.
At all schools, so yeah, good, thank you.
And I think we've seen that before, too.
We, we have.
We have seen that.
Correct.
The list where it's all everywhere.
Altus updated for this year. It just identifies the inconsistencies and discrepancies among the three high schools.
One in particular, you mentioned is a core course that I, that seems to be on here, is American Government. It's on the second page, and it says it's only offered at two of the schools.
American Government is probably the dual-credit or the AP Government course, which are totally different, although that's a, that's a lengthy discussion happening in the social studies world right now. What we're trying to do is just get. What we're trying to do is just get Government right. Because there's some thinking about AP Government, our students perhaps aren't even passing our AP Government course. We're preparing kids for two different styles of test, an AP test and an EOC test. We would really like to get right what holds the accreditation. And if they wanted to take the AP Government course after they take the diet of a regular American Government course, that would be great to earn college credit with.
Yeah, that's good. I just, these are electives or offerings. Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, like college credit, AP, AP, Advanced Placement courses. Advanced Placement courses, there's quite a few offered at Central that's not offered at the other sites.
And your point that you made pretty clearly, but I'm repeating it because it was kind of your summary statement about being able to offer the appropriate rigor and having the resources to do that, not the ability to do, not the expertise to do that, but the resources to do that is more difficult with three schools than with two. Is that what I heard you say?
I want an individual who is certified in the content level that they're teaching in front of our kids. And I want a teacher that's really strong in the content knowledge in front of our students. We owe that to our kids.
Can I clarify one thing? So you mentioned American Government. If you see that asterisk on here, that's an honors course.
I wondered, I was gonna ask what the asterisk.
Yes, that's an honors course.
There were so many asterisks, I thought that's gonna be a very significant answer.
No, I just wanna clarify that.
Stacia, too, can you address, in order for a teacher to teach a class that the student can get college credit, what requirements does that teacher have to have in order to be able to deliver that kind of course?
A master's in your content area, not just a master's in education, which we're finding that a lot of our teachers now get masters in just general education. You need a master in your content area. So for example, a master's in English, a master in mathematics. Those are the courses that you would need to teach. That's what we're talking about when we want teachers that are highly qualified in their content areas with those courses.
Because wouldn't the college require that in order to give the credit, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And are any of these classes, particularly these elective classes for the resources, are any of these able to be shared, not by the teacher moving to be in front of students every time, but through Zoom and other methodologies of teaching? Are we delivering any of these currently remotely?
Missouri Western, you know, they, through their early college academy, will offer some of these courses through a Canvas model, a module work. Mr. Richmond, here's what I know about teaching and learning. Sometimes I don't think we have an achievement gap. I think sometimes we have a relationship gap. I think the relationship gap stems from the software or a device sometimes that we put in front of kids. I would rather put an individual in front of kids that's going to develop a relationship with the child.
Yeah, and I, thank you. I don't disagree with that. I do say that an outcome of COVID saw some strengths and weaknesses of not having a teacher in front of the kids. And some of these higher-level classes, these students are more ready to learn electronically than what maybe some of the others are. I just think that we don't wanna completely miss that opportunity no matter which school model we have.
Absolutely.
Ms. Dieter, you talked about three things that are tough. It's the subwaiver, the critical shortage. What was the third?
Just young inexperienced teachers who may not have certification yet.
Just so you're aware, the critical shortage and the subwaiver are retirees.
Did you wanna say anything about the APR?
Well, I'm very excited about the APR. Our building leaders and our teachers, I am grateful for the hard work that they put into that APR. And I'm, you know, we look at the data, but we look at the names behind that and the students behind those numbers. We're moving forward academically. We're doing the right things academically. I don't want to go backwards.
Yeah, and I think it's noteworthy that, and I'm gonna say these numbers wrong probably, that we were at a sixty-seven percent ratio and we moved to a seventy-five percent ratio.
Sixty-seven point five and seventy-four point seven.
Okay. Well, I knew I'd be inaccurate. I'm just, I'm just an engineer.
No, you're, you're good, Mr. Richmond. I dream about these numbers. Or there's sleep over it.
You know, a threshold is above seventy percent. And so it's not, it's a really noticeable improvement. I just can't help but comment on, it's talking about saying something at every meeting. It's a major accomplishment, and it gets us over a threshold. And we don't stop there, but it gets us over. It not only was a good differential improvement, but it got us over the seventy percent threshold. So congratulations to the whole academic team on that, and students, obviously.
Thank you.
So is there a difference between equal and equitable?
Yes, and I will tell you, again, I can, the vision, there is not a lack of vision. We have a, we have a strong academic vision. It is the educator, that's the puzzle piece here.
It's the step.
Okay, so I think there is a bit of a misconception. If you look at Oak Grove, and their optimum capacity is seven thirty-two. So we've had a little bit of criticism as to why don't you put more students at Oak Grove? And we do have some special education programming there. So Dr. Anderson gave a great report last week, and we wanted her to share that with the whole board.
Yes, good evening. So I am gonna start out by talking about our incident rate as a district. And we currently are sitting at eleven point nine percent of our student population that are special education. And that totals one thousand three hundred and fifty-six students. And that is according to our December one count last year. And I can tell you that the state percentage is thirteen point five percent. So we're actually still lower than the state percentage for special education as a whole. What I can also tell you is that we are exponentially growing. So last year, our population percentage was eleven point two percent. And so we've grown in that capacity from last year. Every year, out of our ELCs, you can hear me talking about how we need to add programming classrooms. So predicted for next year, we have thirty students approximately coming out of our ELCs that need foundations programming. So when you hear me talk about foundations, that will kind of explain what that means. But I wanna just say we're identifying them and we're coming. And this is actually happening statewide, not just in St. Joe. So please also know that when DeLo and I have attended the MoCase Conference, this is happening all districts. Students are coming up with significant disabilities and needing significant programming.
One quick question. You're doing great so far already. But eleven point nine percent, how many, how many students did that represent?
One thousand three hundred and fifty-six. And that was our December one count last year, so that changes. And you have to remember, we have kids that come in and out. So we transfer kids in all the time that have IEPs. So if you'll look at the very back page of the handout from me, it talks about a description of classroom settings. And I think there's a misconception about what special education looks like in some of our programming rooms and what kind of rooms we need. And so that's why I wanna explain what these are. The first one is resource. And those are students with like specific learning disabilities, other health impairments. They receive most of their instruction in a general education classroom, but they need to be pulled out to receive specially-designed instruction. And that happens within a resource classroom by a special education teacher. Then there is what we call a DLC, a daily living classroom. Those students generally have lower functioning IQs. They receive most of their instruction within a special education classroom. Sometimes those students do attend lunch, recess. Let's say they are really good at writing, and we push them in for writing time or whole group reading time or calendar time. We want them to have access to the general education classroom at some points in their, in their day. And then we have what is called structured learning. These students generally have behavioral issues. Lots of times, they are qualified under emotional disturbances. They have an average to low average IQ. They have behaviors that interfere with their learning and the learning of others, often very unsafe. They often elope from classrooms. These are the students that we often have to utilize seclusion and restraint with. Some students are supported almost one hundred percent of the time in a structured learning classroom, but they also still have the ability to have access to a general education classroom. So our goal is that we teach them behavior skills and other skills that help them access the general classroom. And we start pushing them out to classes within the building that they can see success in. So oftentimes, they'll start with a specials class, music, P E, art, because they're really great at that and that's something that they have capacity for. Or let's say they're a really great reader. So we will push them into a regular classroom for language arts. So these students still need to have access, but they have to have a full-size classroom for their special education needs. Then we have what you heard me refer to as foundations. All of these classrooms are currently housed at Oak Grove. These are students that generally have a diagnosis of autism. They are very low functioning. Many are nonverbal or struggle with communication. They need intense support to keep themselves safe. They often have toileting needs and self-care needs. They also have concerns with safety, and they will elope from the building or the room. And so we have to be very careful in how we maintain that safety. Then we have what is called targets. These are housed at the middle school and high school level. These are students from our DLC classrooms or foundations classrooms. They receive almost all of their support within that classroom during the day, but they still do have access to their peers. We want them to be able to go to recess or lunch or assemblies with their classmates. Then we have one room that is considered medically fragile. These are students with very significant health needs. And you've heard me come before you and ask for LPN pares and nursing support because we have students with very significant health needs, trach, feeding tubes, very significant needs. Then we have what is called public day school. This is housed at Webster. So when you hear about Webster programming, please know that there are two separate sites to Webster. There's an alternative programming, and then there's special education programming that is there. So currently at Webster, we have public day school, which is run through the school district. And we have three, no, we have four of those classrooms there. And then we also have a program that we call High Road. And if you remember me coming before you and asking for money for our CSE program and CSE contract, that is a contracted program. We used to send those students to Kansas City to a school called Milestones. That is a separate public day setting. And that was, they need very intense support. Instead, we brought that back to our district so we could service more students in-house. They were not on busing. So please know we have public day and High Road at Webster, okay? I have listed all of the schools and what types of programmings they have. Every, every building has a resource, classroom, resource, special education. But then those programs are scattered throughout where we've had room. On their page that looks like this, it's a chart. It explains that daily living classrooms, structured learning, foundations, targets, our medically fragile rooms, our public day and our High Road classrooms, they all need a full-size classroom to function. Those are students that are housed almost all day or all day in special education. And so please know, when we're making these plans, we have to look at the number of rooms needed for special education in our plans. Public day and High Road, which are currently housed at Webster, those are segregated programs. And that is because of their unsafe to themselves or others. And they have to be segregated from the regular population. They have proven that they cannot withstand that. They perform better. And to meet their IP needs, we have to educate them in a private setting. And so there are special doors that will have to be installed. And so when we're looking at the facilities plan, we have to think about what spaces could we move this into while also keeping that segregation that's necessary for those students' IEPs, okay? On that chart, I've also identified how many resource rooms, DLC classrooms, structured learning, all the different types of classrooms, how many are needed at each level, at middle school and then high school. And so just so you know, like there are twenty-five resource rooms at elementaries. Every, every elementary at least has one resource teacher. I also located, or not located, I've also listed the max number of students that are in those programs. So for instance, the intensity of the student need defines the size of the program. So our structured learning classrooms, for instance, due to the behaviors and having to understand restraints, those student class sizes are kept very small. So I have down below like a class size, a very max-sized classroom of a structured learning would be ten to twelve. And so our public day, again, the very max is ten, and that's big. We would really like to keep those at six or eight due to the intensity and level of those students' needs. One thing I wanna point out on this chart is our DLCs and foundation classrooms are growing due to the number of students that we have coming out of our ELCs, the number of students that we have transferred in from other states. These students are coming in with very significant programming needs. So if you look at our foundations, and this is how I wanted to talk about Oak Grove, those twelve extra classrooms that people think that are out at Oak are actually full of special education students. So currently at Oak Grove, we have twelve classrooms of special education that are housed there. We have one resource teacher, two DLC classrooms, and nine foundations classrooms. Guys, this continues to grow. So we have, when I started in this role four years ago, we had two of these classrooms, the foundations, and we have grown to nine already. Next year, we are going to need a minimum of twelve of these classrooms. So just know that there are students there and staff there. There are many pares that have to support. Each classroom needs three to four pares depending upon the student's IP and what is required for support with their needs, okay? The other thing is the targets program. So currently, there are two of those teachers at our high school level. Really, they needed a third teacher this year. The two individuals at Lafayette that teach that program, they're amazing. They were not able to find someone that we felt was qualified to take a role there. So they are, just two of them are teaching that, but they each have twelve to thirteen students. And really, we need to add a teacher for that next year because we have more students coming out of targets at our middle schools next year. So in all, what I want you to understand is we need a minimum of ninety-nine special education classrooms throughout our district for next year. Forty of those have to be full-size classrooms. And fifty-nine of those rooms have to be a smaller classroom that could hold like fifteen students at max, okay? So forty full-size classrooms. Do you have any questions? I know that was a lot of information. I tried to provide everything I could on this chart.
Dr. Anderson?
Yes.
Let's see, if you'd have us take away something there, it is that we have to use caution when we're looking at those building capacities because of these programs.
Absolutely.
And so when we look at the chart that just tells us what the optimum capacity is, there's more to the story.
Yes, that's, that's why I'm here tonight.
Right, thank you, thank you. And, and as part of what, as part of where we got a little bit crossways early on in this where we said, well, I thought the capacity of Lafayette High School was one thing, and now we're being told something different, it's because we didn't dig deep enough into these programs.
Right, right. It's something we've considered when we were working at developing all of our plans, but I think there was a lack of understanding about that. So that's why I heard that, that we were gonna have twelve open rooms for ELCs at Oak Grove and that they're simply, they're full of special education students right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, so in regard to Plan E, we have done a lot of prep work for this. All of the full-size special education programming rooms will fit at the elementaries that we need at elementary for next year. All of the high school programs will fit because there's proposed to have three high schools. My concern is the middle school level. With the three buildings and the capacity and them already being over capacity in that model before you, the middle school special education programming classrooms will not fit in that model. the middle school special education programming classrooms will not fit in that model. The options that I saw, like, when looking at maps, would be to look at the secondary Truman Gym. We could potentially make that into classroom spaces. But what I know in my head is that the one gym that they have, I don't think is large enough to house with boys and girls PE at the same time. So, you have a boys and girls PE that run at the same time, like at Bodie, and they used to just split the curtain and they could run both classes. I don't think the gym at Truman is big enough to do that. So that would be a concern. Also, when looking at this model and Plan E, by all of the accounts that we have looked at with the maps and the number of rooms that we need for special education programming, this model only allowed for four extra full-size rooms in all of our elementaries. If we wanted to expand preschool, I'm not sure how we would do that, because there is not going to be any space. And you have to also think about how fast our special education population is growing. And we really need to make sure that we have a room or two available to expand that, because we're required by law to provide those services for students per their IEPs. Are there any questions about that?
So this plan can't support, or doesn't properly support the needs of special education?
No, not at the middle school level.
So, why are we considering it? So what, so then what's the solution? The solution is just not closing Bodie?
The solution would be we have to have a space for the, they have to be, they have to have access to the general education population. This is not a population of students that I could say, "Oh, we're gonna put this specialized programming at high school," because they need access to their middle school level peers. So for instance, targets, they need to have access to the middle school level. So we really would need to keep that other middle school open if that were the case. I can't just say, "I'm gonna put it at a wing at a high school level," because then they don't have access to their middle school peers.
Yeah, that makes, yeah, separate, separate, I get it. So, so then what are we doing? But, but this is where, this is where I get confused and quite honestly frustrated, is that we're presented with something, and then we're also presented with why it doesn't work. So I don't, I don't know what we're doing. Anybody else?
Well, we're hearing what we asked for.
Well, but I didn't ask, I didn't ask for three middle schools. I didn't ask, I didn't ask for that, like, my...
Right, but we did ask to get the money right.
But we didn't even get the money?
And that middle school's only going to close us in this plan.
Right, right, but my, I guess...
It's Plan E, right?
But this isn't, but this isn't Plan E, right? This wasn't, but, so, I guess, so I think I said this in, at the board meeting. Like, I wasn't a fan of choosing Plan E, but I thought we were gonna move forward with talking about it, essentially because we were telling the 250 people, "We're not gonna close your high schools." So if we kept a three-high school model, what I was hoping then to see is, okay, to meet all of our needs and keeping three high schools, these are the things you would have to give up. So I did anticipate, anticipate seeing Pickett on the list of potential closures. I anticipated seeing Bessie, I anticipated seeing Pershing. So I guess, that's where I'm, I just don't, what are we doing? I guess, more questions?
I know that the, at the last meeting, it was a motion and approved to choose Plan E with modifications. And so, it's my understanding, at this meeting, we were going to discuss about the modifications and how to make it work.
And I was hoping we would have already gone. I was hoping that would have come today. Because, you know, we're talking about time, time, time. We have to make a decision. If you'll recall, at the last meeting, I asked to move that item to an informational item so we could have some time to discuss what we were doing. And then, we abandoned the two plans and went with a three-high school plan. So I would have, I just would have thought that we would have gotten something that said, "Here's all the things that you have, that you have to do to make it work." I don't know.
Yeah, it feels, it feels to me like we're, the administration did the best they could to balance everything that was being asked. In other words, you know, if they came back and said, "Actually, you know, we can't close anything," or, "Better yet, how about we have to add something," then that just obviously flies in the face of where we're trying to get to with our budget, right?
But it just, it feels to me like, and I know we've talked about this a lot in the last year, every time we get close to making a decision, we say, we say, "Nope, nope, let's start." And then we start all, we start all over again. And I, my argument would be that the drop in enrollment and the turnover that we see is because we don't make a plan and we don't stick with it. Like, we had a plan, we had a plan that took over a year to create. And then in April, we, I, I'm on film, asking in February, March, April, and May, "Plan B, Plan B, let's move..." And then we, at two different times, we've heard Lafayette Central is not feasible to use as our two high schools. So we went to Benton Hyde, but that didn't, that wasn't feasible either. At least, we seemed to agree to that. And then we go to this plan. It just doesn't seem like we have any front direction of what we're doing. And I understand that you must be incredibly frustrated too.
I'm sure. Dr. McGinnis, did you have the input in this? Do you have, do we have all the information that you guys have established?
The direction of the board, which, in my opinion, has not been consistent.
Correct.
Two weeks ago, we had been talking about a two-high school model for years. And up until two weeks ago, that's when the board voted to accept Plan E, 7-0. So this is what we are giving you in two weeks of time. If there's other items that you would like, we would gladly get that from the board.
But your preference was plans 2A and 7B, because you had already established that?
Well, our intention was to go with the two-high school model.
Okay.
We were good with the two-high school model, because we can provide consistent offerings to our students. It would help us financially. That would help be more efficient as an organization with staffing across the board. We were all in with a two-high school model. That was part of PAC, that was part of Vision Forward. That was everything we talked about up until two weeks ago.
If we were okay with a two-high school model, if you looked at the long-range plan approved last year by the board, it is still included a two-high school model, Plan B. And it was not implemented after, after April. And that was a two-high school model. And so, I think, and this is only my opinion, after we chose not to implement Plan B, it's like everything almost began all over again. It's all new plans, all new options, and we got derailed.
So I guess I'm confused on what is Plan B. Yeah, I need that, I need that defined so I know what Plan B is. Because I've looked at Vision Forward, there's no Plan B in Vision Forward. There's a nice flow chart that shows what happens if the bond passed and what happens if it didn't pass.
Plan B, correct, is, is what we were gonna do when the bond failed.
Yes.
And so, we never quite got to the exact Plan B. We went after it, we came back with a 7 and a 2, and that's as far as we got.
But, and I guess, but Plan, Plan B...
Seven or two.
It was, but, but no, Plan B with the long-range plan was that we would go to two high schools. I think it very, it clearly showed that you'd have to use the two largest high schools. So, Spring Garden would have gone back to an elementary school. Benton would have gone to, would have gone back to an elementary school. Benton would have been to those types of things. My concern, and where I feel like I've kind of gotten lost on the way, is that I don't, I don't know that I am, I tend to not believe that we can put our current-sized student population in two of our existing three buildings comfortably. That is my, that is my concern. Because I've heard, I've heard administration say that. I heard, I've heard that said. So, my concern is, and where my head was on October 27th, when we unanimously voted to abandon those two plans despite efforts to further discuss them, was, okay, we're not gonna make these changes to the high school level, but we're obviously gonna have to make them to elementary and middle. That doesn't get us out of having to make difficult decisions. But, but this very much is the status quo. It's cleaning up some of the things from Vision Forward and whatnot, but it doesn't address the staffing issues that we've been talking about for two years and was the whole reason by the four-day school, school day. But I, I'm concerned.
I'm just, well, at the end of our last meeting, I knew that there was an agreement amongst all members of the board to keep open all three schools over whatever reason. Although I do agree with you, Whitney, I never imagined keeping all elementary schools and all middle schools, especially since all of us know, you know, that we need to, it's way too many buildings.
But, Tanya, at the, at the board meeting, you said, "I'm not gonna be the one closing your schools."
Exactly, not the high schools.
And I thought that entire, and I've said that, well, well, clearly, nothing was specific at that meeting, because half of us don't even know what the, where we were going with that motion. We voted 7-0 unanimously against the administration and for three schools. And I'm, and I'm sorry for that. I think there's a lot of things that went into that, and that couldn't have been comfortable. But that's what we said we were gonna do. So now, are we going to do that, or are we gonna start over again? And the clock is ticking, time is, time is ticking.
My question would be, and I asked you this last week, do you feel like our current board can make a decision?
I've got a little input on that. So I think, and I think I mentioned this a couple of times, when we were going with these plans, the fact that I had 2019 data is what was frustrating to me, because it's six-year-old data. So, again, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I am a big fan of hiring the consultant to give a look at the buildings and design a plan.
Again, again?
It'd be two...
But what, what is, but what is the, what is, what is new information? And this is to your point. I'm gonna say no, because nobody wants to piss anybody off. Nobody wants to make anybody mad, but that's what leadership calls for. But at the end of the day, if, if we don't wanna close, what new information are we gonna get to make these decisions? What new information is there gonna be? I, I have, was a proponent of two. Seven did not make any sense to me. I had a lot of questions and a lot of concerns about a lot of different things. It didn't have the cost savings, whatever. Plan two made more sense. But again, I don't know that we can fit the kids in those two buildings. So, I don't wanna do something that hurts kids. Like, okay, we have the staffing, but it's not, they can't, they can't comfortably be in the buildings. So if we can't comfortably put these kids, these students, kids who are, is who they are, in two of the three buildings that we have, and I'll remind everyone, we wouldn't be having this conversation if Prop two would have passed. So there's that. But to me, you really can't go to two of our three existing buildings until you have another building that is the size of Central to split them into. You know, I don't know.
My question is, okay, so, two weeks ago, all of us chose to keep open all three high schools. Okay, so what's, is there new information now, you know, that makes you think, "Oh, if I would have known a couple of weeks ago, I wouldn't have chose that?"
So we announced Plan E, and, and invariant thereof, heard the motion. And what I heard tonight, now listen. Administration won't say this, I will. Plan E doesn't work. It doesn't work for teachers, it doesn't work for the finances, it doesn't work for the students and the class offering. It lowers our academic offering. It doesn't work. And so, that's what's changed for me.
But we already knew that. We already knew, we already knew that. I already knew that. You, I think you said that at the Lafayette, when you presented it. We already knew that. I think what's changed is that we don't have 250 people staring at us.
Well, I agree with that.
And so, but then it feels, but then it feels like we, we made a decision. And, I mean, some of these people were even lectured of like, "You have to help us, you have to help us," which I still don't understand what that meant. But we told them, "You have to help us, we're gonna need your buy-in." And they all stood, some of them stood up and clapped for us. And then two weeks later, when they're not all here, we're like, "Hmm, nope, never mind." So, my issue is, we should make plans and then move on. That's how you move forward.
So is that the missing piece with E then, that we, that unstated tonight? But what we would have to do is go to the taxpayers and ask for more money to hold this system together?
And I didn't, I didn't understand that that night either. And I think it was maybe you, Tom, that said, or I don't, I don't know who said it. Somebody said something about, there were a lot of comments about like, "We're gonna need the community support, we're gonna..." And there was talk about them volunteering, and then, I don't know if there was some sort of alluding to having to pass some, pass some sort of bond issue. I don't, I don't know. Because all I knew was, in the two options that we were given, I wasn't gonna vote for either one. That's not to say that I wouldn't have talked about two and more discussion about two, but we weren't, we didn't wanna do that. We wanted to move, we wanted to not do that. So I went with everyone.
I think most of us wanted more information on that.
That's why I moved it to an informational item.
No. So tonight, that's what they've done for us, is to bring us more information, bring us data that we can clearly look at, that can be substantial.
But we lied to these people. When they pass a gym, we lied to them.
I don't understand us choosing a plan only to get more information. I thought we were choosing a plan for implementation.
Right, and that was my point. Dr. McGinnis said, and I think Dr., I think Ms. Studer said as well, these plans aren't what, Plan E is not gonna be what you need it to be. I believe that was at the Lafayette, I wasn't there at that, at that meeting. We already said, "It ain't gonna work." So we already know that it wasn't gonna work. So, to me, what we were saying on the 27th in front of all the people who stood up and clapped, was, "Okay, we're gonna, we hear you. We're gonna go to three high schools, and we're gonna make it work." So I...
How do you make it work?
You gotta close some stuff. And, and I, and I hate that, I hate that. I look at all these lists of schools. I have friends that work at all these schools. I have friends' kids that work at all these schools. Like, this is not easy. But if we said, "We're not gonna do three," or "We're not gonna do two high schools," which again, I agree, Dr. McGinnis, we've talked about this for years. We were on board to do it. But then push came to shove, and we couldn't look at the people and make a decision. So that, that is what it is. So we're going to three schools, so that, or we're staying with three schools, now we have to make hard decisions at other levels. Or, we're just, let's just keep, to your point, we are not, let's just admit, "We're not gonna make a decision," and save them all their time. Let's save them all their time. There's gonna be a new election in April, new people will get on. Save them their time.
So, why did you vote for it then?
Because I wasn't gonna vote for these two plans until I had more information. That's why I made a motion to change the agenda to talk about an information...
But you also voted for this one as well.
Because, if we're not gonna do those plans and we're gonna move forward, then let's move forward with this. But we told the people we were gonna do it, so now let's move forward and do it.
With modifications, if it's possible.
No, I didn't hear the "if it's possible." I didn't hear that part. I heard, "We're going to, we're gonna keep your three schools." Everyone stood up and clapped for us, and we said, "Thank you, thank you." And then we're gonna come back and be like, "Hmm, it, it doesn't actually work," which we already knew. We already knew that.
But nobody spoke that there, did we?
But nobody spoke that there, did we?
Because. Alright, then let's then let's what are we doing tonight? Then what are we doing?
Nobody came out, it was like.
We're not doing anything tonight.
We're not doing anything ever. We're not doing anything ever. How do we push? How do we move things forward? How do we make progress? If all we're doing tonight is saying, we looked at a lot of information that we already knew, but we're not doing it anyway. You knew this wasn't gonna work. You knew it wasn't, they already said that.
It needed to be black and white for me.
Then what are we doing? What are we doing? By the end of the month, we're information. That's that is the one, planning and getting information are the two things that we are great at. Execution and actually doing something not good at. And it's to the demise of the teachers and staff.
Well, OK, so my question is. OK, so now what?
I miss students and staff.
OK, so now what? Like, what was your recommendation? What from, obviously, you guys are saying that true, it's not gonna work. Um, we have several issues here. What is your recommendation from here?
I think you need to make a decision in November. If you can't make a decision in November as this current board, then I think you should consider pausing. I think. Status quo would be better than Plan E. And then you could. Consider a consulting firm who could, you can hire a demographer to do updated demographics. Do I think that's the best plan? No, because we've been talking about two high schools. We said this two weeks ago, and I'm sorry, but it's our admin team that took all the bullets for that.
Yes, you did.
When we were the ones who put together all these plans per your request. Anytime you wanted to change. But I don't think this current board can make a decision.
Does the does the current administration believe that we can't fit into two high schools?
I don't think it would be comfortable, but I think that we could do it.
I'm gonna say my suggestion, again, is either we get a facilities committee back on board to help us figure this out and not be left up to you guys and all of us. Also, I am a big fan of a consultant. I think a professional needs to come in and that six year old data needs to be updated.
OK, so I will tell you. We did a consultation with a company early on when the board gave me the direction to go to two high schools, one with Central Benton, one with Central Lafayette. And use any consulting firm. You can't get a consulting firm to do that work in two months, but we did do an initial consultation with a firm. They would first start with a demographic study. Enrollment projections, kind of where our population is shifting. And it could range anywhere from thirty five thousand to a hundred thousand dollars, depending on how you customize those services. I will also tell you, at the end of that, they're not going to care what neighborhood is where. They're not going to make accommodations for any particular neighborhood. So as a board, again, you would have to decide. It doesn't matter where my friends live. It doesn't matter where they go to school. This is where the lines are and you would have to agree to that. The owner of that company that we did the consultation with openly told us. Then they went through this whole process with another school district and the board didn't make a decision. So I would hate for us to waste dollars. On not having a decision and. As far as the facilities committee goes, we've had PAP, we've had Vision Forward, we had a facilities committee for two years and we got nowhere. So I'm up for that because. If you can't make a decision in November, I do think you should pause. Our staff are exhausted. And I think it's fair for them to have Thanksgiving and Christmas and then come back. Consider a consulting firm who can do that work when you have a a new board in place and make a decision.
And and I guess my question to that would be, again, we're gonna spend taxpayer dollars on a consultant to tell us what? What new information is there going to be? There's not gonna be new information. Again, I.
I think the thing about it is, though. Is if it were people on the outside, it's none of the heat on members of the board.
But they do that and.
To make a decision.
Right, but then but ultimately, the Board of Education has to make a decision. So you can hire fifty consultants and spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, which we have already done. We've already, we've already hired people. They've already come in, they've already said, you need to go to two schools. But we won't do it. So if we're not gonna do it, what what and I say this all the time. I am frustrated that we are so hung up on the three high school issue. That the other issues envisioned forward don't get addressed either. Because that's not the only issue in this school district that we have talked about with equity and problems. The the inconsistent middle school model, the feeder patterns. Like, all of that needs to be addressed as well. Now we have the financial dilemma. But. I I don't want to see, and you know what, I'm here until April, that's fine, whatever. But I don't want to see us continuing to burn taxpayer dollars. Because we don't want to make a decision and we want to be able to say, we're still looking at it. We're still looking at it.
And that's not my recommendation to go in the consulting firm. That is an option for the board to consider.
We need to make a decision.
Because I have floors to make a decision.
Then then what then? But we did, I'm.
I thought we made a decision, so what was the point in that?
But it doesn't work?
Then make it work.
It doesn't work.
But then make it work. Then make it work. That that then make it work. Like, I guess I just, again, I and 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 I think part of this to to your point, Jennifer. When we at least had a facilities committee meeting, we could spend time and that's all we talked about. This is the most we have talked about any of this since we started this kind of over in August. So without that committee, and I'm not saying we appoint people to it, because we've seen the debacle that that creates. I'm saying if we can all sit down and say, and I think I think we would have gotten to one of those two plans if we would have had time to discuss it, because we could have said. Here's why I can't give my vote to this one, but I could give my vote to this one if this if this changed. We weren't able to have any of those discussions. So you and your team are over here just constantly throwing darts at a moving target. Because we're not, we're not collaborating, we're not working with each other. Because we don't have, we don't have the, we don't have the tool to be able to do that. Because emails don't work.
I know when we're able to discuss it at meetings.
We could, we could have discussed it that night at the meeting because I believe I heard you say that you were for Plan Two B and why you were for Plan Two B. At that meeting, we could have had that conversation.
But you made a motion, you made a motion.
I did, I did, because I want to see modifications to it. So now I'm seeing what those modifications are. What it looks like to have three high schools.
There's no modifications made. There's no modifications.
Certainly is, because Hyde Hyde is not closed on this new plan. So that is a modification.
I know, but that's not a doable modification. Maybe we need to discuss the modifications.
I thought that's what we were doing right now.
OK, then let's. Talk about the modifications. To Plan E.
OK, let's.
Because we. Took a vote to choose Plan E. And then. It was our understanding, you know, that we're going. To discuss about the modifications. OK, so. Can we discuss modifications on Plan E?
Yes.
Or? Please. OK, so are we still doing that?
That's what I thought we were doing the whole meeting.
Well, no, we're. In the meeting, it's almost like, well, are we going to do Plan E or are we not gonna do Plan E? Unless I'm misunderstanding, OK, but. It was my understanding. Coming to the meeting. Plan E is already a given, it's already chosen and we're going to choose how to implement it. Is that your understanding too?
So my question is, where's the early childhood going to happen in this plan? Because that's also something I asked for, where is early childhood? And and I totally understand that early childhood doesn't work in this plan. We can't just stuff preschool children wherever. Um, it doesn't work. We are not going to get that if we would choose to continue using this plan.
So what what are we able to modify the plan to get there?
That's my question. And it doesn't appear that 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 we will.
Well, OK, but. It's able to be done. Because it's us making. All other decisions, like, like. If you look at the feeder pattern. If you look at the feeder pattern and it's not closing any elementary schools.
Right.
Are there elementary schools? We are looking at. Who could close? To be able to to become an early learning center. Well, and and so here's my question. Well, that's not. It's what we're. That's not how it works. It's what we're supposed to talk about right now. So here. Here's my question. I think part of the reason why. October twenty seventh, we said, oh, no, we'll go to three schools. Was because it was so much changed so quickly. I don't know, I don't know, that's what I've heard from other from other places. So my question is then, and I think we've talked talked very briefly about this and it came out and went away. With a long range plan. Can we create that long range plan that moves, that shifts things over time? That says, OK, over five years, we're gonna phase out this. We're gonna move to three middle schools over this period of time. Now, listen, I understand that's another plan and you're not actually doing anything unless you actually say. Per phase one of this two or three phase plan is gonna happen immediately and then we're gonna move on from there. I also realize that we have a new board every year, which is part of the problem that we're in now is people have, the board changes every single year. But is there any benefit to saying, OK, we're gonna take a plan that leads to two schools? That names them, because we find out now, if you don't name them in Vision Forward and in our long range plan, then people act like they don't know what's going on. If we name, here is what is going to happen over one, two, three years and here's how it's gonna happen. I I don't know. I I also, I don't think that you that the staff, and this is not a knock on you all. I don't know that you could have done all of that in three months. The logistics seemed like an absolute nightmare. Casey Hausman, he's probably at home sleeping. Like, that would have, I just don't know how they would have even been able to to physically do it. So if the if people are like, OK, we like Plan Two best or whatever, the two high school model, how are we gonna get there? Is is that agreeable? We're gonna, I mean. I don't, I don't know. But just not doing anything, I think, can't be the answer. Well. Or maybe, I don't know. No, I agree with you and then we can't. Choose a plan and then at the next meeting, well, no, I don't know about that. No, we have to stop that. Like. It's not right and it's not. Fair to the community or the staff. Or the administration. Like, like. If I misunderstood at the last meeting, I apologize, you know, but I thought that. As we. Took a vote. All of us. Were committed, you know. To a version. Of this plan. I didn't mean, you know. I don't know. I don't know. OK, so. To your comment, are you looking? For more information about implementation of this plan? Or what were you thinking?
I wanted to see what would happen if we did it and I think we've gotten that information. It's still missing an early learning center in the plan and I, in my good conscience, cannot ask our administration. To make Plan E, four, five, six and seven. So I'm not, I I'm with you, Whitney, I'm not sure where we go next either. I mean, I think this is a big complicated process. It's, um, I certainly understand why people haven't done it in the past. I get it, it's hard.
I have a question from my fellow board members related to Ashley's comment that she doesn't think this board can make a decision. Is there any chance we can get? Behind Plan Two?
I think, so my my issue, my issue is this, Mike, and I know I've I've talked to you a bit about this. I was open to discussing Plan Two. I had concerns about the middle school, I had concerns about the boundaries. But my issue now is that we told a gymnasium full of people that we weren't gonna do that. So so that is my issue, because it it really does feel like there were a ton of people looking at us, a ton of people upset and we folded. We said, ah, we're not gonna do it. So so now there's, they're not here and so now we're gonna say, oh, let's do it anyway. Like, that that is my, that's my concern is going back. I I'm, I think. I think Plan Two was the better option and I think we could have made it better, but we didn't.
Anyone else?
Well, I I think you go back, I think I think Dr. McGinnis's plan for the fairness of herself and her staff needs to be answered. Anybody else want to keep doing this? Like, are are we going to try to carry out? The the recommendations of Vision Forward? Are we gonna go ahead and kick this can? And let somebody else do it when people get elected that we'll actually do it?
To answer your question. And I understand that I'm only the one vote. I've always, after I was initially elected. Been a. Two high school person. Last week. I chose a different plan. And, um. Over the reasons I've mentioned. And over the options and the choices. I chose Plan E and I still stand by that. Now. If other members of the board and there is a majority open. To looking at another option. I'm not gonna argue against it, but I'm not gonna go for it.
So who, so then? Can we all chime in on on whether or not we want to keep going with this? Because I think Dr. McGinnis and her staff deserve an answer.
I agree.
We're not going to agree. And I think it's OK. If we put it on a pause, then that responds to what you request, Dr. McGinnis, is to pause. Give your. Would you?
No, well, thereby, I I believe a decision needs to be made in November. And if it can't be made by this board, then I would suggest a pause.
But it doesn't have to be tonight.
No, it would need to be in the November.
We have to move forward. We have to decide if we're moving forward. Like, I understand this is only a work session and we're not casting votes and and making votes. But we can, by a consensus, say, sorry for your time. Carry on with other items. Otherwise, tomorrow, they're gonna go back to work and try to hit the target that we have not set. So either are we gonna have them do that and continue to waste their time? Or are we gonna march forward with the plan? It doesn't sound like we have four people willing to to mark, to go forward. But it would be nice if people would verbalize that.
Knowing what I know now about this plan. I would a hundred percent be willing to make a motion to rescind that decision. In support of Plan Two.
No, no.
So but.
I'm just asking how the audience, it will be. Comment later. Please.
So here's my question to you. And 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 I. My question to you then is, if you can't get three other votes for Plan Two, would you move forward with some decision? Or is it too robust for you? You know what I'm saying? Like, I.
I would vote no to this plan.
Like, even if it, even if it addressed, not, obviously, this plan, this plan doesn't get us really any closer to where we need to, and that's not your fault. It's not your fault, it's our fault.
Agreed.
If we use this plan and a variation of this plan got better, like, are you interested in only looking at Plan Two again? Or are you looking at how can we make this plan meet our needs? Or do you want to, or do we want to be?
I I I don't know how you correct all the things we heard tonight.
Well, we're not able to correct all of them. I mean, it's been. Twenty some years of. Creating all of these issues. We're not able to correct them all in. One swoop, you know, but are we able to do a little bit at a time? I'd rather. I'd rather, I'd rather do a little bit at a time over doing a big thing, and it's wrong.
And, and I guess my thing, Mike, is if, you know, I think one of the things that, there, there are two, there are two students that have stuck out to me, um, through this whole process. And one asked us specifically, "Don't close, don't go to a two-high-school model until you're able to, to build another one." And at the time, I was like, "Girl, you know, you know, you don't really talk well." But the more we've talked about it, the more my concern is that we can't fit them with all the programming and everything that they need, that we can't fit our student population in the two schools that we have. And that's a shame, because we had a great plan for a new high school, and it didn't pass. That's fine. If we can't do that, I don't think it's fair to the middle school, elementary, and everyone else to say, "But we're going to leave, we're not going to do anything." There's so much other, there's so many other things in Vision Forward that need to be done. For us to say, "We're not going to do any of it," I think, then let's just resign. Then let's just resign, and then just figure out somebody that'll come in and do it. Nobody ran for this. None of us had to have ran for school board, thinking we were going to get out of this without closing some schools. Like, I mean, that was, that was like the key question we got all the time. So, to me, I would like, hand in hand, Mike, more, I would like to move forward with, with carrying out Vision Forward. If that, and what I would like to know from the board is, are we taking Plan E and going to try to make it better and fit as much of our, address as many of our issues as possible? Or are we going to go back to Two? Or third option, are we going to do nothing?
Okay, we're not going to do the third option.
Well, only if you have four people. Do we have, I, it sounds like me, you, and Mike, we have three people that want to move forward with, with this conversation. But you need four. And I would say, if you don't have four people that speak up tonight, then, then leave them alone. Leave them alone. Let them get back to work on other things. Right now, it seems like we've got three people.
Dr. McGinnis and staff, have we, have we missed something with Plan E? In other words, is there a, another version of Plan E that you would say to us, "At least gets us down the road and contains some goodness"?
From talking with Mr. Lee, I think the goal of Plan E was to maintain all three high schools. Okay? Your most inefficiencies is at the high school. At two of them. So, to make that work, I mean, Dr. Anderson talked about the middle school-level challenges with sped programming. Could you potentially close an elementary? Possibly. But your savings financially should be more of a concern to me than anything else in Vision Forward. That's just my opinion. We're at 10.02. We have $8 million to cut over the next two years. That's a reality.
So, so, again, we have three people.
Wait, wait, wait.
Four?
No, wait, just wait a second. I, I think you need to give other people a chance. Do, do, just don't fill in every gap with, with, let, let people have a chance. People are processing that. I know I am. I'm assuming others are as well. And so, I, I think, I think one of the things you want to do is not respond to every one of everybody's comment, but to say, "Let's have a discussion about that. I'm, I'm glad for us to have a discussion."
She's already said that, though, a few times.
Oh, well, it's his turn.
Let him talk. It's his turn. I'll mention that, though.
Well, okay, then I'm going to say something.
No, he can, he can, it's fine.
I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what I do. Do I go ahead now, or, okay?
It's okay, you have.
I, um, you know, I, I would speak up and say, "I said that about three schools, and it wasn't because there were people in the room. That wasn't, that wasn't impacting me." My bigger impact was, we're closing, um, we, we're closing elementary schools. And I did, I, the, we, I agree with Whitney in terms of, we never really discussed Plan, Plan Two or Plan Seven in the kind of detail of saying, "What, what are we really doing here?" And so, I think things have come forward tonight that fit with the motion. The motion said that if it's financially reasonable, and I think that is a primary driver, it's not the only driver, but it's a primary driver. And I think we've, we've identified that, that Plan E is not financially feasible. It's, it doesn't get us to where we need to be financially. And that's regrettable to me, because it's, it still leaves us in a very difficult position. But a primary responsibility we have as a board is to, is to be able to work on our finances. So, yes, I am certainly open to saying, "Okay, we took a harder run at Plan E, the three-school plan. We tried. The administration worked things up, but $680,000 is not going to be enough with a $4-million target." So, we've got to do something more significant, more radical. And so, I'm, I'm supportive of, and I think the problem became, "Well, do we like this? Or what don't we like about Plan Two? What don't we like about Plan Seven?" And we never fleshed those things out and said, "How do we resolve those in those plans?" It was like, "Here you are. This is your choice, this or this." And, and I feel like that we, I feel like we still need to act with urgency. We still need to make the decision on November 24th, and we need to figure out tonight, what are the pieces that have to happen between now and then to make the decision on November 24th? That's what I think.
Okay, so, Mr. Tom, are you looking at Plan Two then? If we're talking about fiscal responsibility?
Well, I'm certainly looking at a two-high-school plan. I mean, I, I initially, and I said this at the meeting, I initially said that I thought Central Benton was a better plan because of geography. But, but then Central Benton didn't end up in Central Benton. It was Central Benton High. And with that came, "Well, now we're going to make Lake and Elm." It became a whole bunch of snowballing effect. And so, there are things about that plan that are not appealing to me. And there's things about the Lafayette Central Plan that are not appealing to me. But what is appealing to me is, if we're committed that our community needs to get to a two-school plan, we don't need to wait any longer. We have to make the decision. We have to move that direction so that we can move our district forward, and we can make better financial decisions. We can do better things for our students. We can put ourselves on a track. And, and saying that we're going to continue with the three-school, and then sometime later, close one of these other schools is not going to be any easier later. I think we're going to have to say, because of our financial situation, I could, I could end up supporting Plan Two with, with the right discussion. I could end up supporting Plan Seven, B, for a plan like that with the right discussion. But I think both of those, I think, I think the decision would have to be, we're going to, we've got to make the two-school plan, and are we going to close Benton, or are we going to close Lafayette? It's, it's that, it's that simple. And then, what are the ramifications of closing those schools? Okay, I'll put for one.
Is your main, is your main driver fiscal responsibility?
That, that is, I'll tell you what. It's impossible for it not to have all the other things. The community impact, the, um, the ability that we have a sunset, that we need the community's support. Our, our community's begging to get behind something that they can support. All those things are in, are in the impact. It's, you know, the last thing I want to do, really, is alienate some section of our community so then we have trouble with our operating money going forward. But the fact is, is that I don't disagree that if a tough decision has to be made, we should make it, and we should make it now, and we should charge the group of administration with saying, "We, we've given you this, this two-school thing. You know, Plan Two saved the most money. Plan Seven was a better geography." But like I said, I have, I have issues that I want to discuss about that. But I think we need to make that decision primarily from a financial standpoint and the future of our district. It's going to happen sometime, and it's probably the path to a new school. And, and so, I think it's the, I think it's the thing that needs to happen.
Thank you.
I, my whole thing is, and I agree with you, but my thing is, the administration has done so much. I mean, they're tired. They're tired, and I don't know if they can do any more than what we give them. Again, I'm going to say again, we can move forward, but I think we do need community buy-in. I do think we need a facilities committee to come on board and help figure this out.
Move forward in what direction, though? Like?
In any of the directions, whether we stick with Two, Seven, E, whatever. We have to have the community to have their buy-in. I mean, I think we're a two-high-school town. Again, it's not just up to me, but those facilities committees is what they were here for. It should never be left up to the administration and us.
But we, we were sent here by the people.
Yes.
Like, we were, we were elected by the people.
Right.
And so, now, we need to make a decision. I mean, it's, it's, to me, it's change, it's change or perish. Like, that's where we're at. Like, we're at the point where we don't have time to create. We had a facilities committee. We don't have time to create another facilities committee. We don't, and, and what are we going to do? I'm sorry. I'm going to, I'm going to keep talking, because I was elected, and I get, I get to do that. Do we have four people that are willing, at the end of the month, to make a decision? So, you're willing to close some schools?
We have to.
Okay.
And it's going to be, and we anticipate that. It's not going to be comfortable for anyone, but we must.
So then, so then.
High schools and schools are all, like?
Yes.
So, so what, so what are we hoping to do tomorrow?
No, I answered your question.
Just a second. I'm asking about a direction, though. I mean, I think that we're kind of at the time where.
I'm still processing this information we got this evening. And it is, it's not good for Plan E. So, I have to process that just a bit, more than sitting here. Yes, I do, Whitney. I'm sorry, I'm not a out-loud processor. I'm an interprocessor. So, the more data I get, the better off I am to try to make a wise decision. Our students matter, our staff matters, and then the community matters. But our children need stability, but they also need what we can give them, the best we can give them. And right now, we're not.
So, are we?
I am amazed, always, at the improvements that our children are making in this environment. So, I'm just telling you, I need a little time to process this, because I'm not happy with this information.
So, what, what are the, what do we want Dr. McGinnis to do tomorrow? Do we want her to go through this?
Just a second, Whitney. Just a second. Did you already give an idea, an opinion, a direction? I'm trying to get a consensus on, at the end of our meeting, everybody knows what's going on. Because apparently, at the last meeting, we didn't as a collective. And so, that's what I'm trying to understand. Like, I'm trying to get an idea. Are we going back and looking at Option Two? Or are we keeping Option Three? I don't want to leave here and things are still up in the air. Like, I don't know what's going on. I don't know. Well, because it's a lot of information. Only in all honesty, none of it's new information. It's just nicely attached, you know, but there's no surprises. And so, like, I think it's unfair, as you said, you know, to continue to do this over and over and over again, because we're too nervous or afraid in order to do the job that we were elected to do.
So, so what do you ask of Rhonda? I couldn't tell.
Well, I'm asking Rhonda's opinion, like I ask everybody's. Like, like, are you, are you looking in order to move on with Plan E? Or are you wanting to look at a two-school model?
Oh, that is a giant, that's a giant question to just ask me. I'm, I'm kind of there with Kim. I need to think about all this. Honestly, at the last meeting, I was ready to vote for Seven B. That was going to be my decision, to vote for that. However, from chatting with people, I realized that was not going to happen. And so, then I pivoted. I did not cave. I pivoted, because my, my struggle with listening to the community was everybody wanted something different. And, and what I was hearing from the community is, "I don't want anything that's going to impact me." Which I totally understand that. I think that's a natural thing to hear from the community. So, then, we've got some people who want Benton, some people who want Lafayette, some people who want three schools. We're never going to reach a point where everyone is happy. And I, I, I get that. If, if I had a child, I would probably be saying the exact same thing. So, now, this is new tonight. I need time to think about this. I agree, we need to do something. The status quo isn't good, but this is kind of almost like the status quo or worse, because I can't, in good conscience, think about that we're going to eliminate some of these high-level courses, because we are not going to have a body, not even a warm body, to teach it. And in good conscience, I can't do that. And I think maybe that was my purpose in looking at the modifications, and what kind of impact were they going to have? And I, now I think we know what kind of impact. The impact is, we don't get an early learning center. The impact is, we'll have to have, we will no longer be able to have open enrollment, and therefore, children will have to go to the school where they're supposed to go, and we're going to get subpar learning for our children. I can't be okay with that consciously or vote-wise. So, I need time to think about, "Okay, now that we know this, what are we going to do next?" So, that's what I need time to think about, and I can't, in this moment, make that decision in this moment. And the good news is, we're here tonight to have a work session to talk about it.
Do we have, so again, straw poll, if we can make this easy. I can say, "I will not ever vote for Seven B." I'll never vote for it. So, if there are four people that will vote for it, though, then that's how it works. You move it forward. If there's people that are like, "I'm interested in Two, and I could make Two work, and I could, I could go down that path." If there's four people that are willing to do that and are willing to take the kick in the teeth that is surely to come, then we do that. If, so, can we just do, I guess my, I'm just looking for progress for the school district. So, can we just do a straw poll? When we get to four, that's where we're going?
I don't think that people are ready to.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying.
I don't think that anybody's ready, you know, to even to do like a little bit of like, a commitment. A question I want to know is, "Okay, so what information are you needing?" Like, like, is there any information? Or are you only needing a little bit of time to go over the other information? Well, because I'm not able to, in good conscience, ask our admin, "Well, I need ABC." No. No, we need to look at the information, and we need to make a decision or not. Okay, but the only thing I'm asking is, if there is another vote, are we able to keep our word? Because this is cruel.
Madam President, I have a proposal. You know, in light of the new information that's come about this plan and the fact that many constituents have, have reached out to me and said, "Hey, I, I didn't know you guys were going to go with this E thing, and didn't have a chance to weigh in in public." I think that we should perhaps have another listening session, followed by a special work session, where we can make those calls and ask, get those answers about perhaps another plan. Like, like, like Plan Two?
Well, but that's, that's what I'm, so this is what I'm, I, I'm going to piggyback on your proposal.
Okay.
I think we need to determine what has four votes, because that's, that's very simply what it takes.
Yeah.
If, the first question is, are there four board members who are willing, at the end of this month, to forego, to, to accept the criticism, to potentially not be reelected in the future, who are willing to take a vote to change things? If there's not? not four people that are like, I'll make a decision, and I won't go back on it, and I'll, I'll, I'll take it. If we don't have four people to do that, we should stop talking about it. If we do have four people, which I think we do, then, what are we gonna have Dr. McGinnis and her team do tomorrow? Are we gonna have them continue working on E? Or are we gonna have them work on Two? Or are they gonna work on Seven?
And I'm gonna also piggyback off of that. I don't want them to work on anything.
I don't either.
Cause they've already given us all the information that we need in order to make a decision.
And we've had plenty of time to talk about Two and Seven. We've had time to talk about that one.
Okay, so then are, we, so, back to my original question. Are we gonna do anything?
Well, I don't know. I, I thought I said earlier, I don't think we did talk sufficiently about Two and Seven. I think we artificially drew boundaries that didn't, didn't keep the current elementary schools together. I think we just arbitrarily did that. I think that one of the appealing things about this plan was it kept the elementary schools together. And I think that we need to look at Plan Two and Plan Seven, or what would we do? What do, the, the primary thing there, we already know what the financial impact's gonna be. The primary thing we look at is what, what's our feeder system gonna be in those two areas? And we had questions about the size of Lafayette being an eight-hundred-person middle school. That was a question. We had, we had elementaries that were closing, or the whole district wasn't moving. And my feeling is, it's a tough decision to make a thing about a high school, but with the lower cost that it is to close an elementary school and the capacity, I, I probably could get on the work with saying, we're gonna close a high school and a middle school, and, and possibly not close an elementary. I mean, I, we're still in that, we're still in that discussion mode, in my opinion.
So could we, so again, I, I understand this is a work session, but there has to be progress. We have such a short period of time. If we don't have, are there four people that wanna continue on with Plan E?
If there aren't- I wanna continue on with Plan E. I'll say that.
Anybody else? I would too. But if there's only two, then I'm open to progress. Then if we're gonna put Plan E to the side, then we, then we need to decide Seven and Two.
Yes.
I'm not for Seven. I would, I would move to Two.
Or are there individuals, and they're like, I'm not gonna look at Plan E anymore? Mike, I know you're kinda leaning in that area. Like, if there's individuals that are like, well, well, okay, I misunderstood, or I didn't, I was missing information a couple weeks ago, and my mind's different. It's okay to say that. Like, I'm just like you. I just wanna know where are we going right now? Two people wanna continue to look at Plan E. Are there any more than two people wanting to continue to look at Plan E?
That, that's what you wanna do too, is look at Plan E?
I, I would like to look at Plan Two, Plan E, because of the fact that we said that that was what we were going to do. And again, I am very concerned about fitting our student population in two buildings. But, that is not to say that if there aren't four people that want Plan E, I'll move on, because we have to do something. So if there aren't four to do Plan E, then I would move on.
I've already said that tonight, I'm not gonna make that decision because I'm going to consider the new information. And I need time to think about it.
Who, we, I think we have three, that, that are willing to move on from Plan E if there's not four.
My thing is, are we even gonna agree on who's for Plan Two and who's for Plan Seven?
Well, let's ask. Say, say, who, I, I'm not gonna go for Seven. I'll go for Two.
I would be more for Seven than I would be for Two.
You gotta get to four. That's all you gotta do.
It's easy for me. I'm already on record for Plan Two from last meeting, so.
The two, I'll go with you.
If we're not gonna do Plan E, I was leaning towards Two.
Three, we have Three for Two. Nobody else is willing to go on Two?
That's not what I'm saying, just because I'm saying nothing. I've already said what I'm willing to do. I'm willing to look at this information and make a, make a decision at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm just, my opinion, if we were not doing Plan E, I would look at Plan Seven.
The, the beauty of Plan Seven is long-term.
No cost savings. So, so then, okay, so then, compromise. At the next meeting, we don't look, we, we don't talk about Plan E anymore, and we talk about Plans Seven and Two.
That's what I think is.
Then let's do that. But, but we have to have the commitment that we're going to do something.
Okay, so question. Are we asking about a special meeting in a week's time to discuss these, each of the plans? Cause the problem is, is in two weeks is our vote.
Right.
And if there's a question, a concern-
You're not gonna have enough time.
Exactly. And that's what I'm saying, on Monday.
But I think we can, we can, we can send our questions and concerns.
I know that that never-
Well, I know that there's not a discussion.
I don't know that I'm going to be in town on the seventeenth.
So, and I think the time will-
I don't know if they have a line.
I, I think the issue's gonna have to be, the next meeting, if, if we're saying Plan E is not, doesn't have four people, the next meeting, you're gonna have to decide between Seven and Two. And then you're likely gonna have to have another meeting to vet out whatever plan it is. Does that make sense? Like, you're gonna say, okay, I like this about Seven, I like this about Two. We get four people to go to one of them, and then we're still gonna have to probably flush some things out. Or, Dr. McGinnis, are you expecting that we would make a selection over Seven or Two, and then part of the implementation process is flushing that out? I, I don't know. That's, that's, I've been concerned about that, because then it just feels like we don't have all the information. I don't know.
I think you guys need to have dialogue, and then make a decision.
I agree.
Because what happens is, you do that in isolation. You send us questions, you talk to people, and then you tell us, consider this, consider that, but the rest of the six do not know, as a whole board. So, as hard as this is right now to listen to, I, I think that you have to come back together and, and try to hash that out, and make a firm decision for us.
Okay, so next Monday?
I'm willing to meet, however many times we need to meet before the twenty-fourth.
We don't have to wait till Monday, but-
I agree.
I, I'd be, I'd be for meeting sooner. And the fact is, is most of the facts are there. We just, I think we do need to somehow, before we talk out, what are the, what are the implications of these two plans, and have the opportunity to have some input, and then make a decision. But I guarantee you, on the twenty-fourth, I'm gonna make a decision. I'm gonna make a decision, what we're gonna, what we're gonna do. And I'd like to do that with as many of the concerns that I have and others have addressed ahead of time. Not just the plan that's put before us. I think, I think there's a responsibility for us to have some input into that. And, and if that input needs to happen on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I don't care. We need to, we need to do that because the twenty-fourth does need to be a firm deadline, or we can't execute in the fall.
I completely agree.
I'm good.
Okay, so next Monday, is everybody okay? I mean, I know that you-
I mean, is that too late, though?
Don't know about Zoom.
Do we, do we do it before then? That's what I'm asking.
What are we meeting for? Are we meeting to make modifications to Two and Seven? Cause that's where I'm, they've already made so many, they've already made so many changes. I mean, is that what we're meeting for? To keep, or just discuss what's there?
We're trying to set up so we can, as a board-
My question.
We're trying to set it up so as a board, we can meet our obligation to lead this district and this community like we were elected, and say, the status quo isn't gonna work.
Right.
Therefore, where are we going? We need a direct administration of where we're going on the plan that meets the needs of the staff, the students, the finances, the taxpayer. And to get there, we're gonna have to have a few things addressed, right?
And I think too, part of that conversation has to be, how do we, how are we going to implement it? Because I, you know, some of the, the concerns that I had, where we had high school juniors that were like, I already bought my class ring. You know what I mean? Like, so it's like, so how-
I do, I do. But Whitney, I will remind everyone in the room that, you know, this board has to make decisions, not only for that person that's entering their senior year and faced with the change, but for those students that are coming two years from now, five years from now, ten years from now. That's what we're charged to do.
For sure, for sure. And, and, but, and my point to that is, because we didn't make a decision back in April, because we have taken this period of time, we need to be cognizant of, there's a lot of questions that people ask. Are you gonna grandfather people in? I don't know. We need, we need to talk about some of those things, to say, if we are gonna go with one of these plans, how do we, how do we implement it in a way that is least disruptive?
That's fair. I would love to find some-
Okay, so everybody, open up your planners.
Yeah, got it.
I have one, I have one other comment. And that is, administration and, and sent that out with, with a survey of, of the administrators, and said, their recommendation is Plan Seven, seven B, which, and so, I, I wanna make sure that, I mean, that, that weighs that beyond me. Particularly, if we, if we go to say, I wanna choose one of those two, they, they have worked, had conversations, vetted that out, and said, in their opinion, Plan Seven B was the better of the plans. That's what-
Well, I was also listening, you know, to that. Okay, but I also asked you about, is a priority fiscal responsibility? If that's a main priority, it's not Seven B.
Right, I agree with that. But I'm also, I mean, I just think those are the big things to, those are the big things to weigh out. They, they've said, and they, they're a lot closer, I mean, they're miles closer to it than I am. They said that Seven B is more doable for them. And I have questions about Seven B.
I will tell you, on behalf of our team, we would be fine with any of those models that are two-high schools.
Yeah, but the, the poll that you, that you delivered to us said Seven B was overwhelmingly the preference of the two.
It was, but we would be fine with the two-high school model.
Well, that's why I think you gotta be careful criticizing the board on saying what their feelings are about things, because we're trying to decide too. And what we want is what's right and best for the district, in every case. And so, I think that, I think that we need to, we need to apply that both ways. And I think on the twenty-fourth, my dream still would be that we all said, the administration and the board all says yes to a plan. And that, and that it's not the administration's going along with it, cause the board said it, or the board's going along with it, cause the administration. But we actually flush out, which of those two plans are we all gonna be able to say yes to, and then from that point on, we say yes to the community on this plan.
Well, okay, so everybody, look at your planners. And what's your availability to meet? You're leaving town and will be gone.
I'm leaving town on the thirteenth.
Okay.
Twelfth it is.
On Thursday.
Wednesday, the, it'd be Wednesday. It'd be not tomorrow, but the next day.
Okay, so meeting on the twelfth?
So we're foregoing the meeting on the seventeenth?
Kim's not able to make it.
Okay.
And I think that we all need to be a part of that conversation.
Gives us more time to react to some-
Excuse me?
Gives us more time, if we meet earlier, like the twelfth.
And if you have, if you did it on- Twelve, then you could still have something the following week, or?
I agree.
Okay, so, is everyone available on the twelfth?
Yes. Yes.
Five-thirty?
Yes.
Yes.
Ashley, your team? I know that's in the next couple days.
Like you had mentioned about rescinding the vote from the twenty-seventh, I think that probably needs to happen on the twelfth, before moving forward.
It can actually occur on the twenty-fourth. It can occur on the twenty-fourth, if we make a new note, if we make a new motion.
I'll just ask, is there anything that you need from our team?
No, I need y'all to get some sleep, cause you're probably not getting much right now. No, I think that you've given us enough.
So, on the twelfth, again, cause sometimes we leave here, and then we don't know what else we've agreed to.
Right.
On the twelfth, we're gonna meet at five-thirty. And our, our goal is to leave that meeting with a decision on a two-school plan, that either we're all okay with purely implementing, or saying, we want this with potentially some changes. Is that, is that what we're trying to do here?
I thought it was a discussion about those plans.
I mean, I think it has, so, and that's my other question. Is it a work session, or is it a special meeting?
I think it should be a special meeting, cause it would open it up to the public wanting to speak. Okay, but the problem, okay, but the problem is, is I'm afraid of there being another meeting like it was a couple weeks ago, and then, like, like, are we looking at all three plans, or are we looking at two plans? It was my understanding, we're no longer looking at Plan E, cause it was not that interest, and we're looking at the two plans.
And then from there-
You're nodding, and you're nodding.
Yes. And then from there, I guess, so then that is my question. Because I don't want, I, I would not want us to have another meeting, cause people are gonna show up. So-
As they should.
As they should. So we're gonna have a special meeting. What is the purpose at the end of that meeting? That we're, just to me, why I wanna have the meeting, is that we leave that meeting with at least four votes on a singular plan. Not necessarily that this is exactly how we want it. We may say, hey, we want Seven with these changes, or we want Two with these changes, but that we pick one of the two.
Agreed.
I would agree with that. And I'm gonna ask over to you guys, is two more days enough extra time to be able to get an idea in your mind and direction?
We'll see.
Let me say, I, I don't necessarily, just so you know, I'm saying, let's meet Wednesday, because I don't necessarily agree with that. I think we have, I think we didn't flush out Plan Two and Seven. I think we have the, we have the information, but I think we need, we need to be able to speak our concerns and talk about it. And if I, if I'm coming to that meeting, I could just as easily say, now I'm gonna vote for that. I, I'd like to have flushed out what's gonna be best for our community.
So it's a work session. It's a work session.
That's what I think it is.
It's a work session. That's my thing.
But I, but there has, but to me-
And then we take a straw vote. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. No, go.
No, I, I did. I apologize.
No, it's okay. You've got, it's fine.
Well, okay, so Mr. Tom. Okay, so as you leave out that meeting on the twelfth, in your mind, what are you looking for?
Well, I'd, I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to say, I'm, I've got a straw, I mean, I hope I can leave that meeting saying, hey, I, I think this is what I'm doing. But I'm, I'm willing to say, I'd be willing to take a straw vote that night and say, this is what I'm doing. But we, 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 we need to have this time. And we, if this is all the facts we're gonna have, we might as well decide to not. I'm, I'm saying, I'm saying we need to be listened to and, and talk about, how are we gonna, how are we gonna implement these plans, whether it be from graduations, or, or feeder schools, or finances? We, we've got to, we've got to narrow down and say, these are the two things side by side, and which one are we gonna accept? And is, is Plan Two, as it is now, locked in, that that's the only thing we're gonna do, or are we gonna consider changes to Plan Two? Is Plan Seven locked in, that's all we're gonna do, or are we gonna consider changes? I guess I need to hear from the administration on that.
And that's where I was getting at earlier, is are we coming in just looking at those three, or can we?
No, we're able to do whatever we wanna do, is the thing. And so I thought that that was kind of-
I, I'm still in for that.
Our goal here.
I'm not trying to delete that. But I think, but I think you know, what I'm trying to say is, we need to, we need to go back and have an open discussion about those plans, just like we did tonight about Plan, about Plan E.
And then, my, so my goal would be, that we get to the twenty-fourth meeting with one singular plan, with one plan.
Administration and the board.
The one plan, that we go on the twenty-fourth, and that prior to the twenty-fourth, whether we have this meeting, or- or another meeting before then, the community knows exactly what we're going to vote on, that we're not going to get there, that it's going to go on, this is what we're going to vote on on Monday, the 24th, there's not going to be any variations to anything, that's what we're voting on, on the 24th now.
I actually agree with that.
Yeah.
But, but this isn't the 24th, and so I'm saying, let's have those meetings and talk about those variances, and so, and so that we can be in a position that says, that, that day we make a decision and we live with that decision.
Agreed.
On the 24th?
On the 24th, but we've, but we've, we've predetermined, because we've had the chance to flush that out, what are the small little changes, we don't, we don't go on the 24th for a plan with changes, we vote for a plan, and obviously there'll be implementation things, but we have our chance on Wednesday night, and then if we need to another night, Monday, the next Monday, the next Wednesday, we do whatever we have to, to get any of those questions, so we have something, we come out of there that's a firm thing that we're going to vote on, and that, that's just what the plan is, yes or no.
I agree.
I'm, I'm in.
Sounds good, so, so the, the meeting on the 12th, on Wednesday, we're looking at 7 and 2?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's it, that's what we're looking at?
Yes.
And I am going to send some information in, because maybe it's, or, you know, Mike accumulated that before, but maybe, maybe we do need to say, well, Tom, what input are you talking about? I, I'll commit that I'm going to send that in tomorrow for tonight, these are the things that I'm thinking to the administration, so you know the questions that I have going on Wednesday night, on Plan 2 or 7.
I think that's a great idea, I think we need to know what everybody's concerns is, so we can come together and make a solid plan.
Yeah, and I'd be glad some of everybody that I, I foul the sunshine on, I've never done it, but I, if I, if I knew a way to get it to everybody, I'd do it.
But I, and I think that that's the importance of using the board precedent, like, that's the whole point of the board precedent, is that you're able to, that you speak to the board president, you say, here's where I'm at, and that's, to me, that's been the linchpin that we've been missing, is there hasn't, we haven't had the kind of communication for Latony to be able to say, I don't think you got four votes on this one, or here's, here's what this board member is saying, here's what this board member is saying. So I agree, we need to all give our thoughts, but the, the email process is just not working, because it just, it just begets more questions, so we have to be able to have an open conversation on Wednesday.
So I don't mind if it takes two or three meetings in between.
I agree.
Agreed.
Because I don't feel like Wednesday it's going to be any different, because I want that information.
Just got to get the four votes.
And then when do you come back to town?
I, I just don't know if it's going to be by the seventh.
Okay.
It's not finalizing.
And so in the meantime, if there's information that you guys would like, if you could email it over to me, and I will email it over to Dr. McGinnis.
And then can you guys like meet and talk?
I'm just asking, yes. I would like to meet with him. I'm completely open to that, well, I do agree with you, I mean, I think that, I think that at times communication is missed, lost, or it's miscommunicated, and so it's why I've been contacting members of the board, you know, to get your input. If you're not able, you know, to give me that, I still reach out, you know, with their needs, you know, to be lots of communication in an orderly fashion, and so I'm just asking if you guys can get me your questions in a timely manner, and then that, the, and then at the meeting Wednesday, it's like, it's not, well, I've got this question and it wasn't answered, and so I'm not able to make a decision, no more excuses. Let's get this done. Excuse me?
Is this a work session then, or a special meeting?
It's a work session, just a work session.
It's a work session, because I don't think we're going to vote on anything.
Well, and and I'm fine with that, as long as we get to, as long as there's consensus towards progress, you know what I'm saying?
And I would also like public comment available.
So that's, and that's, that's my point, do we do a, a work session and add public comment, which I've heard we're not supposed to do? Or do we have a special meeting? You know, I mean, are we supposed, do we have a special meeting and it's an informational item?
Okay, question.
Excuse me.
Okay, my question is.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, guys, come on now, it's already difficult enough. Now, okay, my question is, if we open it up to public comment, is it going to make a difference? I mean, I mean, I don't want to sound like I'm caring, I'm feeling, you know, but, like.
I think you open, I, I think you open it up every single time, because there may be, there may be people that come here to say, you're stupid and I hate you and whatever, but there may also be people that come in and say, have you thought about this? And then we may say, ah, that's something that we need to include in some sort of implementation plan. I think the more, while it may be more painful, more community involvement is better. So if we had it as a special meeting with, this is just an informational item?
Right. I'm okay with that, are you guys okay with that? It's not a vote on the 12th? You're not okay with it?
You're talking Wednesday, right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't mind if they talk, not at all.
No, but that's what we were like.
So a special meeting, just so they can have the opportunity to talk.
Yeah, the deal came, I think, with a work session is typically, unless we amend it like we did tonight, we typically don't have public comment.
And that's against policy, you never do, but we. Kind of do that when we want to.
Have another hearing, you can make adjustment to these plans.
But, and I think that's why you're going to have to have, I think that's why we have to have those.
The plan.
The, the plan.
The hearing comes after Wednesday.
This is the plan.
And then there's not it.
At least, yeah, the hearing comes after Wednesday, guys, right?
Hearing on every single plan, it's no need to if we're not going to implement those plans, it was a waste of time. Like, like, and so I agree, after we choose a plan, a plan, go through the process then.
Dr. McGinnis, you should, oh, Dr. McGinnis, you should, yes, we have to have a special meeting, even though the subject at hand has always been, we're going to close schools, those are the comments we've allowed, is that not met the criteria for a special meeting?
So Policy SC states that you have to have a public hearing anytime you are proposing action, so, and we have talked to our attorneys on this, the safest way to do this is when you are changing what the proposed action is, it's a lot cleaner to have the public hearing. Now, that format can be different, so, and I'm happy to work with Latony what that format looks like for that evening.
Okay, thank you.
But it wouldn't be Wednesday, right?
No.
After.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes, yes. Okay, so are we ready to take a little bit of a break and then open up for public comment?
Yes.
One more thing, and then I promise I won't say. I'm, we're asking about administration, but I'm unashamedly asking this, this, the, the best thing that's happened is we had decorated a few hearts below. I don't want to miss that, but right now, the most urgent thing we have is this, and this is what the, this is what the resources that we have need to be working on, and it's going to go on for the next two weeks, and then we get back to what our primary things are, how do we educate our students, and how do we support our teachers? But I'm not apologetic about the fact that this is going to interrupt potentially all of our schedules, them worse than us, I'm appreciative of it, but I'm not apologetic. We need to do that and hammer this out and make a decision on the 24th.
Agreed.
Okay, let's take five minutes if you're interested to come speak. Come in, it's done. Yeah, we're going to talk though. It's okay, we're going to start. Okay, number one, Kim Dragoo. Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
This is a work session, because you voted unanimously, 7-0 to go with Plan E. In 11 days, you, you worked it enough to figure out that it won't work? Well, I don't, I don't see where you showed us where you maybe could close different grade schools, I don't see that you really dove into it at all, because you don't want it.
Especially.
The chamber's here, so that makes a difference. They've changed everybody's mind, and I don't know how, well, I do know how, but this is ridiculous, this meeting tonight was to discuss what you already voted for, now you're discussing you're going to vote over? How's that go with policy? Since you already voted for someone who are in this direction, then if you take a new vote, that means you need to have three more town hall meetings? I'm pretty sure you do, I don't think you can just. I'm in Limburg, I think I'm going to run. I wasn't going to, but I am going to run for school board, because I've had it, I have so had it with this nonsense. You've got to have public support, you don't have it. You have the chamber support, great, you do not have public support, we have voted you down how many times? How many times have we been to the polls, we have voted you down, we don't want two schools, we do not want it. Do you want a long-range plan? Get a committee, why is there no, there's an academic committee? There's other committees, but not facilities, why? Because you don't want public input. You know what the public support was, I went to all three of them. There was two people at the very first one that was for two schools, everybody else was three. The next meeting, I think there was one, and the third, there was one. Out of hundreds of people, you guys can't do anything without public support, you cannot do anything without public, you'll never get anything passed. If you want the public behind you, then you've got to listen to us, and we want three schools. Now, what does that take in the long run? One, it takes a committee to look at it, and you want a new school on the east side? I'm for that, that can be in a long-range plan. Let's make it equal, let's make it 900, 900, 900, and if you get the demographics right, it all works. But this right here, doesn't work, it's not working. The three schools have worked this long and we've done fine. To her academics, look at how we improved. That's with three schools, that's not with two. History has showed us, when you cram them all together, academics go down. Carden Park and Lindberg is your perfect example, you close schools, you put them all together, that's when we dropped to 60, 7% because you did that. Now you're going to do it to our high schools? Not a good idea, not a good idea. I, I really, I'm so disappointed with every single one of you, every single one of you sitting up there, I cannot believe that you have went this direction. And I am going to fight you with everything, and I may go ahead and do, they should go file to have this district separated. Maybe St. Joe is too big of a district, maybe we need two. Thank you, Ms. Dragoo. Okay, Mr. Shaw.
I didn't expect to speak tonight, so I would give you the short version, and everyone says, "Don't talk as much." We have an obligation to students, and I know that we have a lot of the discussion around here, dealt with finances, I know it's an issue. I said before, my basic philosophy is that every student in St. Joe needs equal access to education. They have to have equal access to whatever extracurriculars are offered at one school, or clubs that are offered at one school. I heard all the discussion about, well, the doctors and the lawyers don't come here because we don't have a good school system. Well, I think when we work at the elementary school, where we start working on getting to the state level at least, you know, we, we've, we have not done that, but we're working toward it. But when you go to the high school, if you took Central High School, and you went through their academic programs, their sports programs, their extracurricular activities, and their clubs, I am telling you, with thirty-five years of experience working at a lot of different schools, it will exceed, at least match, any of those north Kansas City schools that are kinda considered the best. If you took our curriculum and compared it with them, with the central curriculum, you're gonna find out that they're the same. If anything, I think we should sell the fact that we have a good school, and that good school provides that. Why do we have, why are we pushing for two schools? This is what I'm saying. Short version. The reason we have a lot of activity and a lot of courses offered at Central has nothing to do with how smart the kids are. It has nothing to do with what the parents would like for them to do. What it has is numbers. If you're gonna run all kinds of activities, all kinds of clubs, all kinds of AP programs, you've got to have numbers. And they talk about nine hundred, nine hundred, nine hundred. If you went nine hundred, nine hundred, nine hundred, you satisfy my need that they all get the same, but I'll tell you, they get less. They're gonna all get the same, but they're all gonna get less. I don't want less. I think Central is a good model. And how do you create Central? You create Central by having two schools with thirteen hundred kids. And when they talk about modifying it, or taking a plan to and looking at it, I couldn't agree with you more. If you take those two schools, BEE or whatever it is, and say, "What do we need to do, you know, and actually to get that to happen?" I would say, "Two-school model, think of the kids, all the activities." Thank you.
Thank you. Colonel Jones?
Good evening. I would encourage the board to just look at the desired end state. You must implement a plan that ensures full DESI accreditation. Don't lose focus on keeping accreditation in this district. I would like to offer to Dr. McGinnis, to the district staff, to the board, utilize the Philgrade Army officers that you have working in the district. We have myself at Central. We have Colonel Codey Betten. We have Colonel Lox at Lafayette to help design, plan, and show, and implement a plan of the board's choosing. We have expertise in design thinking, force management, strategic planning, human resources, logistics, and staff coordination. This is what we do. Utilize this, we can help you. And my last word is a word of encouragement to the board members. Everything we do is for the kids. We're gonna get there, guys. We're gonna get there. Thank you for everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. Lisa Forsey?
This has been a long time coming. I think I have a lot more questions now than before. I am really very disappointed with all of you. I feel like we haven't met the needs of our kids, and we haven't for a very long time. And this plan, whatever plan, is based on little data. It's based on little information that you've accrued from very little source. There are two districts in the state of Missouri right now, the Kansas City, Missouri School District and the Columbia School District, that are implementing plans. And they are using data and research. They got a demographer. We had one in twenty eighteen, thirty-one thousand dollars, not bad. Went out for our F P, and it was a good bargain. But the problem was, the people didn't want the answer. They didn't want the answer. And you all don't want the answer. You really don't. You want two schools, doesn't matter what else happens. I'm really sad because it's the wrong decision, and it's gonna hurt everybody in the long run. I heard tonight for the first time about special ed, which is kinda my heart. I did that for a long time. And I really think Ms. Whitney has a good point. It's gonna be really tough to do that in two schools. Really tough. And handicap facilities, very expensive, sixty-five thousand dollars for a chairlift tonight. That's gonna be very expensive down there at Hyde, very expensive, but that, if you do that choice. So there's a lot more questions, and a lot more financial questions, but look at those A P R scores. Look at Lindberg, finally. Took, what, six years to get out of the basement after they closed Humboldt? Finally, they passed. You're gonna do that again to the schools, 'cause you're gonna overcrowd them. We need a better plan. We need something better for our kids. Not for you guys, but for our kids. That's all. Thank you.
Kaylee Hollob?
I guess I don't really have as many statements as I do questions, so if I ask questions, are they able to be answered at this time?
No, but I'd be able to get the answers to you after the fact.
Um, I am a teacher at Bodie. I've actually had the pleasure of having some of your students in my class, or coaching some of your kids in basketball. So obviously Bodie is the middle school that's on the chopping block. Knowing that, if Plan E is still a thing, first thing, when closing any school, are we looking at test scores? Because Bodie is the highest performing middle school, by five and a half percent above all of the other middle schools. So...
No people, you're fine.
Knowing, I'm used to interruptions, I teach middle school, it's my daily life, it's all good. Uh, but knowing the growth that Bodie has had, we had a nine percent growth in our A P R scores, and we also have a five point five percent advantage over all of the other middle schools. What the Bodie staff has been wondering is, why would we be the one, yes, our building is old, but knowing the academic performance of our students, why are we the one that's being closed? Knowing the facilities that we have, we have a full-sized gym that we can hold, wrestling, wrestling meets, there's one tomorrow at Bodie. There's a basketball game, Truman versus Bodie, the boys' basketball team played there tonight. Girls had to play at Keetleaf because Truman doesn't have that facility. So just looking at the facilities within the middle school, we had just been wondering kind of why Bodie was the one on the chopping block. I know that everything is financial, but if we're also all here for student academic growth, then why are we closing the middle school that has the highest performing students? Next is, obviously, all of mine are kind of Plan E-specific, or if we go that route, just because it directly affects me and all of my colleagues. We've built an incredible community at Bodie, part of that thanks to our previous principal. But part of it is also the staff at Bodie, we have an incredible staff there. So looking at that, we have teachers who've been there for over twenty years. We've got teachers who have coached there for over twenty years, so they've made their entire career based on being a Bodie patriot, and what that means to them. So what does that look like for them if they're displaced and they are moved to somewhere else? I know that we said that it's hopefully going to be solved through attrition. If it's not, and we don't see either the retirees or the people that are leaving the district, what does that look like for people like me, who I'm a fourth-year teacher? Am I gonna go to Truman, Reuben, or Spring Garden and take someone else's job who hasn't been there for as long as I have? Because I can't stand that. I can't, I can't be the one, like, the reason that someone else doesn't have a job, that just doesn't sit right with me. So I guess all of that being said, being in limbo and not knowing the plan, or not knowing even where I'm going to be next year, and answering those same questions for my students, I teach eighth grade, so where am I gonna go to high school next year? Is there going to be open enrollment? We don't know, 'cause those decisions haven't been made yet. Or asking the seventh graders, who don't even know where they'll be in middle school for eighth grade next year. I guess, all in all, to summarize, we're just, we have a lot of questions, especially since we're on the chopping block, but also, we just wanna plan. We just want to know where we're gonna be next year and where I can call home. So that is kind of speaking with the Bodie colleagues and the majority of the staff there, we just want an answer. We just want to be secure in where we're going to be, where we can, where we can call home next year, because I spend more time at school than I do at my own house. So with that being said, hopefully we are able to come up with an answer, and hopefully, I know not everyone's gonna be happy with that, and that's the unfortunate part of making a decision, but we're just seeking a decision and guidance. That's all.
Thank you. Jennifer Rae?
I will tell you, before you started this meeting, I had a lot more questions than I do now. State of confusion, I think, is how I feel, and probably a lot of people listening in on this meeting. But if we're now suddenly back to the two-school system, I do think we need to look carefully before we do it. I think we need to look at the difference between seven and seven B. When we suddenly cut out Stonecrest, that can leave a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths when we talk about how we're doing boundaries. Before we look at boundaries, I think it's important, one of the other speakers mentioned thirty-one thousand for a demographer. Last time we have it done, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty hit us, and it hit us hard. I think we have to have a demographer before we draw boundaries again. And I think if we're talking about access to education and equality in education, and as one other speaker mentioned, having a lot of students in a school allows us to have all these clubs and A P classes and dual credit, that's where we keep our open enrollment. Think it kind of answers those questions. I don't know what the best plan between two and seven is, because I honestly didn't know what we were talking about tonight. But I do think we need to be really, really careful in where we draw those boundaries, and if we're going to implement those plans, I don't think it's fair to the community to say, "Hey, we're implementing one of these plans, but we have no timeline on implementation. We don't know what implementation will look like, and we haven't put any forethought or talked with outside, people outside, companies outside, anybody else to say, 'This is how we can slowly implement it, which makes most sense for our staff and students.'" You know, for the juniors who are currently in high school, who now are looking at maybe having their school shut down, what does this look like actually for them? What's a slow way to do that, to make it fair, and yet reach where we need to get financially? I think we better be really careful before we do those things. That's it, thank you, guys.
Jeff Leek?
Yeah, that's probably not gonna go up high enough for me. All right. I appreciate everybody taking the time here and to dig into the, the plan that I, that I kind of came up with as a framework. A couple things I wanna mention before, in what I remember from the pact and the vision forward, they did not say go to two schools. That was an option in those, but I do not remember that. You know, I put together this plan to show that there was another way, and I still truly believe that. I came up with options. I would have liked to work through some of those options a little bit more. I, I did share my concerns that there wasn't enough cuts and enough tough decisions being made in this, that I, I think we needed to save more money and show the board that. That was a concern that I shared with the administration. What I was, what I, I learned though is, the space that we said that we had, that we needed, because we've got all this extra space, we don't really have, is what I'm gathering. So we, we've tried to sell, we've got a right size, and build new schools, and do all this stuff, 'cause we're not using the space right. It, it seems like about that extra forty percent space, there's only about an extra thirty percent. So I, we gotta get the right information out. On the plan, the numbers that worked up, things that don't make sense to me, I would have loved to sit down and really hash this out, but we've got five schools that are, will have the same enrollment in, in year two of Plan E, that have an extra secretary. We have five schools that only either lose or gain a, a handful of students that will have an extra teacher. A lot of the savings that were created were, we just kind of, I, I don't know, like, if we restaffed, I don't really understand. The question, do we have eleven thousand three hundred ninety-four students right now? I thought we were at ten thousand.
Less than ten.
Less than ten? Okay, Dr. Hedgecorth, if you could sometime tonight, take and figure out what, eleven point nine percent of eleven thousand three hundred ninety-four, I have is thirteen hundred fifty-six. So the data on the special ed, which that, those programs are definitely needed, and I'm not taking away from that, but if there's thirteen hundred fifty-six special ed students, and there's eleven point nine percent of our student population is in special ed, that means that we would have eleven thousand three hundred ninety-four students. I think different, those are the things that come out to me. But whatever plan you go with, please give it the scrutiny that you gave my plan.
Yep.
Because I, I don't know if we did. And I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine, but like I said, my numbers, and I'd love to sit down, I, there is more savings. And I was fine with closing, and, and, I, I don't wanna close any schools, but I was fine to close them if we needed to, because we, we had to do it. But what I've learned is, we don't have room. So if we don't have room for my plan, we need to ask the questions, is there room enough for any plan that we do? One last thing. The problem that we faced is because we wanna hit a home run and answer and fix every problem with one big swoop. I tried to put a plan together, and by fixing some, it left some out. I don't think any plan is gonna fix everything. I tried to get something that would just move in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Hawn?
Um, we spent many, many hours working on a long-range plan through vision forward, and we had many community meetings in that process. We would like to encourage you to stay on a path forward of supporting the long-range plan. The reasons would be, the district has fallen in enrollment to ninety-seven eighty-one. This is the lowest in recent history. Burst rates are down, student population continues to decline, and unless this community and district does something proactive, we will continue to have to maintain status quo. The district must adapt and remain efficient, sustainable, and capable for delivering excellent education and outcomes. Many of the district buildings are over sixty years old. Updates or consolidation is not only prudent, but necessary to provide competitive learning environments that attract young families and businesses. Forward-thinking facility planning supports academic excellence and helps control long-term cost, maintenance utility staff, et cetera. Stay strained from a long-range plan will affect the growth here in St. Joseph. Local businesses need well-educated workforce in an environment that attracts families. Parents aren't attracted to outdated, undersized, or inefficient schools. If families don't want to send their kids to a school here, they just won't. They'll go live in Kansas City. As Ms. Stewart said earlier, the long-range plan rightly identifies teacher recruitment and retention and student performance improvement as key areas of focus. When we invest in our people, we strengthen not only our classrooms, but the entire community's future. The choice the board makes now about facility consolidations, redrawing boundaries in school configurations, will affect the district, the city, and our region for decades to come. For the record, the chamber board isn't in favor of any certain school closing, we never have been. We are not educators, we're not elected officials. Our board supports having a long-range plan and a strategy and making decisions. We also support this administration. We urge the board to act in vision, encourage, and willingness to invest in our future. Thank you.
Okay. Brittany Z. Yes, that.
Yep.
All right. Thank you. I know that you guys have been presented with a lot. And so I have been teaching for thirteen years. I'm a born and raised Southlander. But I started teaching in Midtown, and so I have babies all over this, this city. I'm going to speak on, just hide, though, because that's where I am right now. And we were on the chopping block for every plan, okay? My questions, I guess, or concerns now because we are back there. I guess, I think and feel that we should have a early learning center in the south end. I really feel like it should be in every part of the town. I feel like we should have an elementary school that is showing progress, and that's what we are doing in the south end at Hyde. So to close us was kind of confusing. And then our middle school, and then our high school. So if we are going to go back to this plan now, I guess, our biggest thing is, we want, we want change in this, in this town, okay? This is your guys', this is what you were elected for. And sitting and watching what happened tonight and what has happened in the past is very tough. And we need you guys to put feelings and emotions aside and think about these children, which you guys are saying you're doing, but we're seeing something else as we are watching these meetings. And we are in this for the children. And so we just need you to make a decision, okay? Whether that be two schools or three schools. Do it, and let's make sure we're doing this. And we are making decisions that are financially going to be responsible. And we are educationally being responsible because these APR scores that just came out, they're not getting enough acknowledgement right now. And we are over the moon about them in our schools, and we are celebrating these things. And I'm, I'm just real sad that the negativity is what gets more acknowledgement around here. So I guess, in the south end, since we are back there, whether it's going to be Plan E, two, seven, whatever, are we really looking at test scores? Is that really important? Because we're showing otherwise, and that's not okay. So that's, that's it. Thanks.
Randy Judah.
Hi, everyone. Use my cheat sheet here. I'm Randy Judah. I'm a community member and a business owner and a parent as well. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Hopefully, people will get to in the next couple of weeks as well because I know a lot of people thought they would be able to this evening or, that they wouldn't be able to this evening, but they would the next couple of meetings. I want to thank you all for your time on this board because I can see it's very difficult. My head's about to pop off from being here for one night, so I can't imagine what that's like for several week or several years. But I was here tonight to kind of talk about, I would like to say that I think that Plan E is absurd, and I'm glad to hear that you're moving away from that. I've asked the board to reject that and to, if we're going to keep three schools, to kind of leave them as they are at this time. The goal of the district has been cost reduction. And as we talked about, I don't believe that Plan E really does that for the district. I'm also concerned that we are, like a gentleman mentioned earlier this evening, why we would be deconstructing schools that work like Central. Plan E is being promoted by a district employee based on school pride. And you guys have heard a lot of school pride out of community members recently. But I don't believe it was compiled based on data and financials. And I also think it's a bit of a conflict for a district employee to be presenting that to you. I do not believe that rightsizing should be done unless you're offering a new school when you take something away because boundaries are really important in St. Joseph, as you know. And all of the talk about changing boundaries, high schools, it is causing anxiety across the population. It's messing with the kids, you know? Teenagers are crying, thinking that they're not going to finish with their, their classmates or their football team may be split up. And this happened to Benton first, and I felt for them. And then it happened to Lafayette, and I felt for them because I respect all the schools. And now it's Central, and we're feeling it too. So it, you know, I just ask that you consider that. I'm not sure what the benefit of Plan E would be. I just know that this uncertainty is corrosive. And I think that Plan E passes the buck of moving, of closing one school to moving five hundred kids at Central and splitting that school up, which is not healthy either. Central is functioning as it is. Doesn't need to be disrupted. I didn't even get through half of what I was going to say. So I guess, in conclusion, I would just ask that you don't rush anything right now. In November, let's flush it out. Let's get on the same page. Stop with the anxiety for everybody. Let's do it right. You know, think about maybe a new school for Central and Lafayette together. Or I will just close in saying, have you thought about, if we're listening to all the communities, have you thought about maybe a new school for Central and then money in that bond to upgrade Lafayette and to Benton? And that seems like it'd make everybody happy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion for adjournment? I have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Call the vote, please.
Ms. Miller? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Chesney?
Yes.
Ms. Kearns? Ms. Lanning?
Ms. Lanning? Yep.
Yes. Mr. Richman?
Yes.
Let's make this adjourned.